Okay, so Rob, welcome.
Did you want to work session?
Welcome to the town board work session Tuesday, February 2020. We have Rob Dearie to present the wood quarter, but actually it's from 2019.
I hope it's good news.
Um, mostly just some mixed. So everybody should have, does everybody have a copy of what was in the packet? So this is what I've done. Ivy and I talked a couple of weeks ago and we're gonna make this a little more formal. I have done this in the past, not necessarily every quarter, several times throughout the year typically when I'm out front of the board for some other reason, I would give a financial update. We're gonna try and do it on a quarterly basis. So the update that I'm giving you tonight is kind of an unofficial closing for year end 2019. The year is not actually closed. We'll continue to pay bills through this month. We'll cut it off beginning of March as we prepare for our audit towards the end of March. So obviously we received goods and services up till December 31st and some of the invoices are late in coming in, so. So what I'm presenting is my best estimate. We have a, there are outstanding expenses and revenues. I have attempted to estimate them and include them in these figures. So I've broken it down. We talk about generally the four major funds, which are the general fund, highway, refuse and water fund. The smaller special districts are usually not significant to talk about in a financial discussion. They're very rarely are they ever short of their budget. They typically, a lot of times it's just money in, money out. It's what's budgeted. So we talk about the four major funds. So we'll start with the general fund and I'll review revenues and expenses. And what I do is I compare them versus the budget. The reason that I do that is that ends up ultimately deciding whether we have a, our totals versus the budget decide whether we have a surplus or a deficit at the end of the year and ultimately whether we add to our fund balance or draw from our fund balance. So as you can see, the general fund revenue, I'm estimating it's going to exceed budget by about one point, almost $4 million at this point. Couple of big reasons, sales tax. So we all know that the county increased the sales tax by 1%. They did it towards the tail end of last year, so we've got four months worth of additional sales tax revenue. That brought us about 664,000. That combined with a decent economy throughout the year, which even before the additional sales tax, I was seeing above budgeted numbers.
Rob, may I ask a quick question about this? So I wanna make sure that I'm clear. So is this plus 664,000 above what you originally projected in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So another revenue line that was kind of offset by a little bit of, by the overtime in the expenditure line, but police protection, 197,000 above what we were expecting. That's due to reimbursements from Summit Greenfield related to the officers that were there on site. Workers' comp reimbursement, it's about 160,000 more than we were anticipating. We had a long-term officer that has been out for quite a while. That's been going back and forth with the workers' comp and we finally got the reimbursement for that officer. So that's what number that is. That was, that's kind of unpredictable. It wasn't expected to come in, so we hadn't anticipated. I think our budget was about 25,000 for the year, because we'll get typically reimbursements that will be two, three, four, five thousand dollars if an employee's out for a couple of weeks or even a month or two. We don't get a big lump sum unfortunately unless somebody's out for a significant period of time. Interest earnings were up 160,000. Interest at the beginning of the year, the interest rates were pretty high, much higher than we expected. They have tailed off at the end of the year, so we did adjust. I adjusted the expectations higher than the budget for 2019, but not as high as the actual numbers, if that makes any sense, because I know that it's coming down and we don't anticipate having the same kind of returns. Interest earnings on our debt service, 63,000 dollars above budget. And what that is due to, that is the interest on the money in the capital fund. So we went out and borrowed money for this downtown project. As we know, it's been kind of slow and the payment for this is kind of slow as we're still making payments. So I had much more money that was actually earning interest than I had anticipated. So there's a really small silver lining to this. It's the interest earnings on the debt service.
I don't know if that's silver. Maybe a lining.
I'll take what I can get. Dividend earnings. This was a new budget line for 2019. I think it was 2017, our results in workers' comp allowed us to join what's called a safety group, which earns dividends. In 2018, the amount of dividends was very, it was small, so I had just offset the expense with that money. In 2019, the number was 163,000 across all four of the funds. So I actually need to show that as revenue. It really is not proper accounting to offset an expense there. So it's unbudgeted in 2019. We have added it to the budget, that line to the budget in 2020.
But doesn't, it varies so greatly, doesn't it?
It does. So what I budgeted, so we have a 30-year history that shows anywhere between 20 and 40% dividend. I budgeted at 20%. So I took the lowest of the 30 years and that's what I used. It's been at 20%, I don't know, five times or so in that 30 years. It's never, it has never not paid a dividend. And that was the lowest it's been. So that was the budget I used. Property tax interest and penalties, about 50,000 above budget. That comes with the late payments on our property taxes. And 2.7 if we ever caught that, well, we'll add to that number. Summer camps was off a little bit this year, about 30, almost 34,000. I talked to Ike about that and he said it was the Tots Camp, the youngest camp. And I guess sometimes that stuff is cyclical and you have different age groups going through the school. And he said it was just off from what they expected. So it wasn't a terrible number. And on the, on the other side of that, the expenditures then aren't as high either, because if you're not running a camp, then you're hiring less counselors, you have less supplies and so you'll see it reflected there too. Concessions were off 29,000. I think we had, that's, the concessions are where we put, and it's just the budget line, where we put the franchise fees from the Cablevision, Altice now and Verizon. It's where we put the train station, the rent in the train station. And it was that budget line, we were anticipating putting any revenue if we had from the cell tower.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't have that in 2019 yet, so. And the co-sponsored rec programs, that was off a little bit from what we anticipated. That's always kind of a guess. The co-sponsored programs are programs there, that we work out with certain vendors. And the deal is that, that we get, depending on our deal, they get 80% of the take, we get 20% of the take. So you'll see a revenue line and expenditure line. Teachers' camp, I think, is one of those. And Ike was saying that was, they didn't actually run those camps or they only ran one of them, I think, as opposed to the two or three that they normally run. So that paints a good picture for our revenue, 1.3 million over budget. On the expenditure side, that negative is actually a good thing, because it means we're under budget at this point. I did project out any of the larger bills that I'm aware of. Legal bills are almost allocated in there and anything else large that I was aware of. So at this point, we're sitting about 375,000 under budget in expenditures. The first line, if you were to look at the budget line, you would see the contingency, contingency funds are not yet allocated. That's 150,000 dollars. It's in the budget each year. You'll get a memo probably in two or three weeks as I shift that. It's just a budget transfer, but the board does have to approve that. Property tax refunds. We budget 100,000 each year and I've been doing budgets since 2011. Two years we've exceeded the 100,000 and the other years we have not. So it's just kind of a placeholder. This year, we only had about 4,000 dollars worth of refunds. I know in 2020, we can expect more than that. I'm not sure it'll be 100,000. But in the past, some of the refunds that have made that go a little bit bigger, we had SG, which was about 260,000 a year that we issued a refund. So we definitely missed on the budget there. And Riverwoods was the other one. Yeah.
So when Josh takes and negotiates the tax sorority settlements, a lot of them, depending upon the timing, if we do them early enough, we're able to incorporate them into the assessments. And so no refunds result. So it means that the decrease in assessment is shared across the entire valuation of the town as opposed to those later ones that come in that result in these, you know, the refunds. And that's, it.
I'd have to add Josh has done an incredible job. Our refunds are down significantly from what they used to. And he's aware of the timing, so, and he's got cases now that he's got booked for February that he's trying to get settled so that he can get that in before April and we don't have to issue refunds. So that's good.
He's done a terrific job with it.
Another category that was below, below budget, youth athletics. I think that was where we saw the teachers. I think that might be where that's paid out of. But in any case, the expenditures for that were a little bit lower, about 50,000 lower than we expected. Legal expenses across multiple lines, 46,000 dollars below what was anticipated. So we didn't really have any real litigation or any, any big litigation in 2019. Can say that. It's passed. In 2019. And also, one thing that's kind of driven that number up in the past and we didn't see that this year was significant labor related expenses. We didn't have either contract up in 2019. And some of the issues that we use labor attorneys for in the past, we haven't needed, so.
Nick, I'd like to think it's potential litigants fear of Keenan Bean and Nick Ward Willis that they said, you know, we'll settle.
You were positive.
Well stated, thank you. Pleasure's mine.
It's very positive.
You got that, Warren.
One of the contracts is open for the end of this year, so.
Not a big number, but employee benefits are about 14,000 dollars below what was budgeted. Total budget in general fund for employee benefits is about 6.4 million, so. Yeah, I'm kind of proud. I came within 14,000 dollars of estimating a 6.4 million, but, and 14,000 to the good, so I like that.
That's a little smug, though, huh?
Yeah, so you were off 5.23% there?
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I got that right.
I'm surprised you only carried it out two digits. I was expecting like four or five. This is really 0.22, I'm sorry.
So those were the big negative numbers. Obviously, I can't touch on every one of several hundred budget lines, but that just summarizes it. Some of the lines that were over budget, the transfers to capital. If you remember, we approved transferring 300,000 dollars from essentially fund balance into the capital project for the basketball court and playground. So that's why that number's over budget. Police overtime. It actually overall ended up 52,000 dollars over the original budget. But if you take out the 161,000 dollars that SG gave us, we were actually 109,000 dollars under budget on police overtime. So we did pretty good there. And just one other thing to highlight, town board, not town board, but town hall special projects, 29,000 dollars. We installed the emergency exit windows in 2019.
Just for fresh more recollection, the transfer to capital for the playground and the basketball court, that included or did not include the additional site work and, for example, the other work that's happening around?
For, well, the entire project is 1.2. I mean, this was, you know, you had, we borrowed 280 or 300,000, we get 325,000 in grants.
Right, I mean, it's for the entire, so that's, this is for the entire project?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So that kind of summarizes what the general fund looks like right now. At this point, I never like to be held to a number. There are a couple of different auditors entries that come in. One of them has to do with our health insurance and the, and the fund balance that we have since we're self-insured. They make an entry there. They also make another entry based on delinquent taxes. And there's a, an entry for uncollected taxes. So that affects fund balance in, in some way, plus or minus. So I never give a, an exact number, not to mention we do have a couple of revenue sources yet to come in and some expenses. So I, I'm comfortable to say we will, in the general fund, add to fund balance and not have to draw from fund balance this year. I will also point out this revenue, while we're 1.3 million dollars over budget, we also factored in fund balance in the revenue source. So we probably won't need to use any of the fund balance that we allocated. So general fund numbers look very good this year.
So like, if I'm understanding the math correctly, are we like in 1.8 million surplus?
At this point, or, or close to that, but we're not, we, that would have to get offset again by we have fund balance that was supposed to be allocated to the budget and it's not yet. So. I don't like to give a number, but we're, it looks good and we will be adding to fund balance, which, which is good. Moving on to the highway fund, not terrible, but not, not quite as good news. Talking about the revenue there, there aren't very many sources of revenue in the highway fund. It's basically your property taxes and the state aid that we get, whether from CHIPS and Paved New York or from the snow and ice reimbursements. So we actually were over for the year by 216,000. The state aid, as we have done in the last several years, was up by ni, excuse me, 91,000. We don't know it at budget time, but we typically are allotted additional funds from the Paved New York program and the extreme winter recovery. So that totaled 91,000 for last year. The dividend earnings, 80,000 dollars. That was a bigger share, if you notice. That was, that came from the workers' comp. It's a bigger share than the general fund. The highway fund is definitely the highest workers' comp premiums. Those are based on the actual premiums. And when you have guys that are working out on the road, it's a higher premium than, say, an office worker is. So when we allocate that back out, a higher share went into the highway fund. And snow and ice reimbursements, 41,000 dollars. They do a reconciliation of prior years from time to time. I guess our contract is based on miles of road and how many storms they got. And so you have a budget and they give you an amount of money and then a year or two later, you get a check from a prior year, which I never mind. So this year was about 41,000 more than we had anticipated.
We can have to figure out one.
I'm happy with it. I don't, I don't know their formula, but I'll take it. At this point, expenses are just over budget, about 5,800 dollars. Road paving went over budget by about 53,000 dollars, but we typically, actually it was under budget, sorry, by 53,000. Not sure exactly why we ended up that way. I know we added back, typically we take the Paved New York and the extreme winter recovery funds and add that back in, so I guess we didn't use all that.
He came close, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's not an exact science. Brush and tree work is actually 40,000 dollars under budget, which is a good thing. In years past, we've gone way over our budget. I think that relates to usually when we have these pretty violent storms in the area and they knock the trees down. Got to have our, our tree vendor come in and do the work. Employee benefits in, in the highway fund, I didn't do quite as well, only 1.02%, 11,000 dollars under the budget. Road maintenance materials were over budget by 80,000 dollars. A lot of that's pothole repair work and has to do with water main breaks. We've got to repair the road after that. Snow overtime. We were doing okay and then we had that storm, what was it, right before Christmas and pushed us over. So we were about 50,000 dollars over for the year. And salt, we were about 61,000 dollars over for the year. Unfortunately, we ended up having to get a delivery at the very last week of the year, which.
Throw us this number so we know.
I was not happy, but obviously we.
It seems to me if it's an expenditure within like the last five days of the year that you would like get, get a pass.
Yeah, I guess.
Just saying, I'm so close.
I thought we, I thought we had Jerry held off until, Jay, honestly, thought we had him held off till January 2nd for whatever reason they put the order in. I don't know if they were anticipating bad weather, but, so. That's a result. We allocated, I think it was 240,000 dollars of fund balance from the highway fund. We will probably need to use that 240,000, maybe not any more than that and maybe a little bit less. But we will need to, to probably use the budgeted amount. Hey, the refuse fund, again, not a lot of sources of revenue there. We were up about 112,000 dollars, compost and mulch. We were 43,000 dollars more than anticipated. Just like you see across the other funds, interest earnings was 30,000, 31,000 over budget. And related to the compost and mulch is the yard waste, about 16,000. We charge residents to drop off the yard waste and that's the revenue from there. And then we process it, turn it into compost and mulch and sell that. So it's kind of a twofold benefit. Expenditures were pretty good. They were 225,000 under budget. Transfer site charges. We weren't really sure when we spoke with Santa Pro and we changed the terms of that about a year ago or a year and a half ago, we weren't really sure of what we were gonna see in the transfer site charges based on the change in the recycling. We thought we were gonna actually put more into the landfills and we didn't. Or not as much as we thought. So that number came in under budget by about 162,000. And employee benefits, like the trend for the other two funds was under budget by 34,000. And the last big fund is the water fund. And water fund is very reliant on the weather conditions for the year. So if we have a very dry summer, we sell a lot of water, which means a lot more revenue. It means expenses on the other side because we're buying the raw water, we're trading it with chemicals. We have the electricity to pump it through the system, so you'll see it kind of twofold. We were, we had a fairly wet summer and that's evidenced by the revenue down 641,000. The general water sales were the biggest part of that, 613,000. Most of the other, the smaller or commercial accounts were fairly close to the budgeted number. But the overall, that's the residential sales, basically, general water sales were down about 613,000 dollars. On the other side of that, expenditures were down about 717,000 dollars compared to budget. And you'll see the variable cost of water, 287,000. Again, if we're not selling it, we're not using it, so we don't have to buy it. The power for the croat and backup, we had been budgeting that significantly higher over the last few years in anticipation of this project. It hasn't panned out. They haven't closed it down for as long as they expected. We have changed that number for 20, 2020. We have not budgeted as much in the power. Excess per capita, that's also a cost of raw water. When the town exceeds the limit placed on us by New York City, we pay a premium on the additional water and that's what the excess per capita is. That's budgeted about 500,000 a year, so we're 182,000 short of that right now. There is a 100,000 dollar contingency in the water fund. That has not been allocated yet either. And you'll see that request from me in a couple of weeks. Couple of things that have exceeded budget. Oh, I'm sorry, I still have a few under budget. Got the employee benefits with 78,000 under budget. Water meter materials, these are replacement meters, 53,000 under budget. And power at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, 37,000 under budget. Again, all of those are related to the decrease in activity. The significant increase was maintenance and repair. It's 594,000 dollars over. The majority of that is the Inningwood Pump Station. I think the Sulzer contract was in the 400s, was 450 or 460 or something. So that was charged to the operating for that. So if you consider that, we were able to absorb that and still, in the end, we're gonna end up, we allocated, it's around 700,000 in fund balance out of the water fund. In most years, we don't use the allocated fund balance. We add to the fund balance in the water fund. This year, because of that project, we will probably use what was allocated, but probably no more than was allocated in the 2019 budget.
And remind me how that's structured for this coming year? Right, so we're, this coming year, we're replacing the other pump?
Right, so the other.
That's. Is that, was that included? I know some of that was included, some of that work.
It was, it was always anticipated that we were gonna be doing both pumps.
So some of that work was in, there was a purchase order issued and, and I'm crediting it against 2019 for some of that work. The bowl that they just fabricated, some of that is being, has been included in the 2019 budget. I would imagine there are still expenses related to that that will be charged in 2020, but I, those I don't know right at the moment.
I think Jerry had envisioned having them fabricate an entire new pump.
Yeah.
And they were gonna be using the, the good parts of the existing pump number two and the refabricated bowls as a complete spare to be, to be stored. Because we were talking about whether or not we should accept.
Right, whether we, right, they're gonna give them stored down there and then bring them up and install them up here.
We're gonna be ready next time. It won't be, hopefully.
So I guess, I guess I'll just summarize and say that of the four major funds, I would not anticipate using more than the allocated fund balance in any of the funds. And in the case of the general fund, certainly not. And the refuse fund, we may not need any fund balance either when it, when it comes down to it.
Rob, you were just referencing the maintenance and repair for, for the pump station, for example, but the service line repairs, that's what confused.
I'm sorry.
Is that for underground piping? Is that?
Yeah, maintenance, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that last line. Yeah, maintenance and service line repairs. That's for water main breaks.
So my, my understanding, if my recollection serves me right, about 10% happened in the hamlet of the water main break. Was that the number?
Oh, yeah, that, yes, traditionally, yeah, within this small section, we.
Right, right, so I guess.
But not in 2019.
No, 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 traditionally, before we did the infrastructure project.
Before we started the project, yeah.
Do you know whether any of that was from the hamlet or is that all outside the hamlet?
Oh, I would not think any of that's the hamlet.
None of this is the hamlet, yeah. We have a, a water main replacement project on Dawboard that's being done. So that's a portion of it, yeah.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the, you know, the change orders? Because I, I did.
So, so we were just talking about C and M change orders earlier. So if you take a look at these change orders, they're for cost item overruns. So these are the more traditional, easier to, to verify change orders. We determined that we needed another bollard. You know, the amount of concrete that we used in a specific, you know, for footings ended up being greater because we had to make them a little bit deeper. You know, additional milling areas before we take and repave, we had to take a mill down. The difference between doing full death reclamation and let's say just doing an overlay. So the totality of, you know, 39A through 39J, other than the, the last one, the 55,000, you know, relatively modest, totaling 138,000 dollars, are a little bit more. The last one, the fifty five thousand, you know, relatively modest, totaling a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars are a little bit more. Easily verified, let's say it that way.
And and I also showed on this one, and I, look, he didn't show it on the summary there, it contained, if you look number, well, letter E.
Yeah.
Um, was an under run of seventy six thousand, so.
Right, and he didn't, he put it in his memo, but he didn't actually put it on this.
Yeah. So I've included that on my spreadsheet as as the under run, but I I noticed that on the memo that he.
Yeah.
He summarized it, so the the total amount of overruns is one thirty eight, but that's offset by seventy six nine fifty five as an under run, so.
Yeah.
Is it one thirty eight less seventy six or is it?
Yeah, is the net, would be the net.
Oh, okay. Basically seventy seven, seventy six.
You're approving those changes, the hundred and thirty eight you're approving, because we have to pay those.
Got it. Yes, right, okay.
The the change order under run is not really anything you're paying, it just kind of is deducted from the the.
That's why.
Yep. Overall.
Yeah, the end contract amount. So what I've done to update this, if you look, I guess, it's on the third page, it's marked page two, but uh page one was a summary. So if you look in the third page, um I've included from the last. Update that I gave you, I've included change order thirty eight and change order thirty nine. I have kind of revised the. Change orders underneath that that have been submitted to Boswell and what we know are in the works. Um, and I've just summarized the various overruns and underruns that we've become aware of. Um, Boswell's still reviewing those and the town is still reviewing those. So that's uh. That's the best that we have now, I've got, we were informed that there are an additional eighteen change orders that remain outstanding. That have not been submitted to anybody yet, and um I don't have an idea of how much those would total. I don't know if those are small change orders or large.
It would be good to get a sense from Ed when he's here next week, if there's any time limitation around when they can continue to submit change orders.
Yep. Seems like the least of a question.
We've been very respectful. All along.
Okay.
Is that because you're anticipating change orders that we don't know of yet outside of punch list?
Well, those eighteen, we don't know.
Those eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh outside of the eighteen.
There shouldn't be any, well, we shouldn't be charged for anything else, the punchless stuff would be included, yeah.
Right, right. And yeah. Okay. Um, the the next item we have here actually is uh is the Ricky, so it's the police stop arrest online booking system, and it's just authorization to to purchase, it's been included in the twenty twenty I T budget.
It's actually in the capital.
For capital?
It's the, yeah, it's in the I T capital budget, which was the uh four year capital replacement plan, we did anticipate this. Actually, I feel like every time we talk, it was the Ricky mission, we're finally.
Yes, replacing the.
When they came up and they said, we're replacing, they said, really, I I've heard that we needed a new one for the last five years or so. I guess they struggled through with the old one.
Certainly have an issue with it, but I can imagine anyone does.
Yep. Um, can we just uh skip ahead, I um I don't know um. If uh if uh Ike is here or not, but I just just to approve the uh the local law to create chapter twenty one of the town code concerning police department administration and disciplinary proceedings. We're gonna have to open up a couple of. So um, it's just, it's on page J D five of the packet.
You say we have to open up for the hearing, so.
Second.
Aye.
Nick, would you like to summarize this first?
I would, I'll just get my page out.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, so this is a local law the town board introduced at the at your last meeting, is scheduled tonight's public hearing. It's concerning police department administration disciplinary proceedings and allows the town to authorize when charges are brought against a police officer for it to be. Um, heard before a hearing officer, and then the hearing officer will make a recording recommendation for this board to review. Standing procedure in Westchester County, just that it does need to be a local law adopted by the town board.
Does anyone have any comments? Okay.
I'd like to vote on it.
Can we close it?
Yeah.
You don't have any, it varies upon the board's discretion, on this one, I'd be comfortable and like recommend that you close and vote on it.
I'm just a resolution.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
We can prepare a resolution day if we can. Number two.
Later.
This one I would just love to do. Scott.
Alright, um I move to adopt local law number one, twenty twenty, a local law decree chapter twenty one of the code of town of Newcastle concerning police department. Administration and disciplinary procedures.
Second.
Paul and David.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presuming. Okay, just Ike here.
Ike is here.
Jane Leman, please.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rob, have a good night.
Um, yeah, this is very, I I don't know if you're, I don't know if John's here. Come on in, just two cheers.
You guys.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, how are you?
You make you nervous?
That's not a great moment.
Me nervous, he need more than waters.
That might not be water.
No. I was gonna let that just be out there, but.
Well, I'm at home.
Yep.
So new group.
Yes.
Got all these new faces.
Yeah.
No, I got an old face.
Hey, that's an option.
Don't respond.
So you just got up tonight.
Okay.
Happy to have you.
Happy to be here.
Do you know everybody?
I.
I think we should go around.
Let's go.
Yeah.
I be cool.
Jeremy Salanda, just some guys here tonight.
Well, hi, Jeremy.
An old face.
Hey, I'm Jason Lake, I'm on the town board.
Very good.
Hey, guys.
Oh, me too.
You too.
Lauren, I'm Jill, just.
Well, you're sitting at the table.
Yeah.
Christine, I'm the town board tax receiver.
I'm Baloney, chair of the commission.
Ike Guzios from the town of Recreation Parks.
Nick Ward Willis, town attorney.
Joel Shapiro, town administrator.
Lauren Levin, town board councilperson.
Emily's a cats, town board member.
Okay, great.
Hey, so one of the things that this board has talked about doing um is bringing all of our kind of volunteer boards and commissions. And on a sort of regular basis, um we're kind of determining what the right cadence will be for those conversations. Um, but basically to check in with everybody about what are the major projects that they're working on, um and to hear from you. Um, but also to think about how the town board can support you and the work that you're doing. Um, and so we wanted to start with you all, you're actually the first one of these that you've done.
Oh, wow. You get to break the ice, huh?
Um, because we knew that there were a couple of really big projects that we wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to discuss with you guys.
Awesome.
Um, so, so where should we start?
Um, can we start with um our R F P for recreation master plan?
We can certainly start there.
Okay, do you have a?
Yes, I do.
Is this what I put Hillary's?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Do the board members have that?
Yes, in the package, so um we actually had a a staff level meeting with Mike and Sabrina. Mike, I'm okay.
Should I, should I reintroduce myself?
Yes. At least I recognize them.
She said with um Mike.
I just started.
Mike, um, it's a combination of um Matt and Ike and. They're like, um.
You'll do fine.
I've been called once, so it's okay.
He's gonna recognize you, you can see generally. Um, so we um Sabrina had the thought that um. There might be several areas of a master plan work program that we could actually handle in-house with staff. And so she, at least, she created this with Ike.
Yes, yeah.
Did the recommission participate as well or just?
Uh, not really, we had some conversations ahead of time and I just tried to relay what you're hoping to accomplish with the master plan.
I just wanted to give credit where credit was due.
Early feedback was given, I would expect we'll run this past the.
Oh, no, no, completely, yeah, right, yeah, so um, so things like task one, task two, um were all things that. Internally, we thought at least were things that we could handle. When it came to public outreach, so basically task four, that was the area that we thought that we could use some help with. And we would be interested in um going out um to R F P to try to. Um, identify some uh firms that would be able to assist us with that. Um, Ike was really terrific in identifying um a number of um R F Ps from other municipalities, um significantly larger than ours.
Yeah, not exactly apple to apples, but at least a baseline for what they were including in their R F Ps and things that we should be looking for and asking for.
Right, so we were.
So can I just, for just a second? When you say that there are certain things that we can do in-house, who's the team here who would be responsible for doing in-house work?
So we were hoping that um the recommission along with planning might be able to help us out with things like um. The town physical characteristics, demographics, you know, economy and housing, these are all things, task number one. That we can take a look at our all our existing master plan, which is quite old for recreation. But there are certain foundational documents in in it that we thought that we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel on. There's also certain planning studies from Westchester County Department of Planning that would be, we would be able to take and use that information, it senses things like that.
And some of this seems like it's in our townwide comp plan also.
Yeah, so it's already.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, because because actually that was um, we we use that as kind of.
Bless you.
We want to incorporate what was in the comp plan, because obviously I did dialogue with Sabrina when she was putting the comp plan together.
Right.
Um, to use as a basis for our master plan, so you will see, you know, we'll be pulling a lot of that from.
Striking similarities between the documents. Right. And also, just, I'm sorry, I should just back up. One of the reasons why this is first on our list is because this was identified in our comprehensive plan as one of the uh. Top priorities that the town should be addressing, and so much like our form-based code and our sidewalk survey. Creation, you know, creation of this R F P recreation master.
With the, with the, yeah, go ahead, you're, we're gonna say the same thing.
That begs the question.
I'm sorry.
It begs the question, is it sort of the timing, the ability to get it done when you're juggling so much, and I appreciate what Sabrina done a hundred percent.
Yeah, right.
And that was part of the conversation that we had when we met yesterday, um was whether or not, because, you know, and the commission would like to see this done within a year. Um, and that was one of the things that we talked about yesterday, with Sabrina was, you know, it's great if we can do this, a lot of this work in-house, but I know she's busy.
Mm-hmm.
And her department's busy, you know, we're obviously busy, um can we make that happen, and and after talking about it, seemed like actually twelve months was.
A reasonable.
More than reasonable amount of time, and and Sabrina felt that she was gonna be able to allocate.
But, so my concern though is that twelve months may be a reasonable time, but all of the things that are identified in task one are prerequisites to be able to move. Forward with the things that we would then be bringing in a consultant to help with.
No, no, no.
But a lot of them have been done already. Yeah, I I just wanna make sure that we're really on a path where we can accomplish the goal of the commission, which is to.
So.
Get the report done with it, you know, get the plan done within a year, so. I guess I'm I'm, I just wanna make sure we've had this conversation, that we understand the sort of risk rewards scenario there, because we did say during. Sort of our planning for twenty, the twenty twenty budget.
Mm-hmm.
That we have funding to be able to bring in a consultant to work with us, to put this back together together.
Oh, we we learned. Okay, so um whether we seek um an R F P that we have a um. A consultant come and do tasks one through five, or we do part of it in-house.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure it affects the timeline all that much when it comes to, for example, test three, the overall and individual park profiles.
Mm-hmm.
We really are confident that that's something that that we can work with interns and with the information that we already have and with the recreation commission to take and get that information, um.
All the details of the parks we have on file, it's just, you know, the outreach is gonna be a big thing. Um, and we're not looking at typical outreach either, like the public meetings and stuff like that, but. Crunching numbers is not in my, certainly not in my forte of trying to think all this survey data and everything else.
But I don't think it's just crunching numbers, I think if I'm understanding your question right, it's just being able to move from one to two to three and have it all.
Yeah, and some of that, it's not all linear, like some of that will be happening.
Simultaneous.
Simultaneous, so it's not like we have to get through one to get to two, you know, like a lot of this stuff will be working on at the same time, um, so.
Right, and I think even though we may have budgeted for it to. Take money and use it for something that we are, our department heads are telling us that we can do in-house. Seems like a waste of funds, frankly, if we can do it in-house.
Yeah, if the, I just, you know, I think of like.
And it's a, and it's a fair.
Within the consulting world, we think about like the golden triangle, right, like, you know, if we, if, if, we don't have the staff resources to be able to complete it in the timeframe that we want.
Right, it's a fair concern, right.
Then, you know, then we leverage, you know, extra funding to be able to bring in somebody from the outside to help us with it. It's not that I doubt anyone here's ability to be able to do it.
Oh, no, there's certainly outside factors that could affect it, right.
So that, I mean, that was the message I gave to Ike when he first brought this up with me, I I said, I don't actually have. A horse in the race around who does this, but I have a horse in the race about when it gets done.
Right, right.
And the example I gave was that when we came out of that November meeting and we said we're gonna draft an R F P. And now we're in February and we've got this framework in, and it's in part because of what I think you guys are referring to, that we come out of these conversations with good intentions, but. Resources and people get pulled into other stuff, and so part of paying a third party to do this isn't so much that. It's you can't do it, it's that you don't have time to do it, it's the renting a set of hands, so that's my concern. But I don't have anywhere near the visibility, I have to tell you about what's right, so it's, you know, I think I view, as you asked the question. If we have someone who's gonna have, I'll use consultant speak for a minute, because it's what I do, a certain percentage of their time that we feel like we need, if it's a quarter of someone's time. That's gonna be dedicated for the next six months to work on it, and that's, that quarter of that person's time isn't gonna get stretched into some other new project that we're not talking about yet today. Then then sure, then I think we can do it, if it's like, we, you know, we've we've assigned a resource and then a month later, we're gonna pull that same resource into something else, then. Then I think we're kidding ourselves, so I don't know which is the right thing, that's my, that's my only concern.
This is about bandwidth and opportunity cost, which is what we're talking about, so the question becomes if there's town staff who feels as though.
Yeah. Yeah, it's great.
Uh, that there is, that there is bandwidth to go about doing this, right, so was that kind of unallocated time that was planned for other projects that would have happened in the future?
Right, so.
Or like, what's the opportunity cost of having them work on this?
Right, um, so not being a consultant at all.
Well, throw it, throw it in a dog to respect.
I I didn't even wanna go.
Oh, we finally outnumbered the lawyers.
I think we're even, wait, no, no, sorry, um, yeah.
Who knew?
Um, we we did not envision Sabrina having a heavy hand in this.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Sabrina's um time is spoken for.
Yes.
But we do believe that uh Kellen, this would be a fabulous opportunity for Kellen, who's our uh assistant planner. To be able to step in and do significant work on this project. The other thing is, is that, you know, one of the things that that we noted with the comprehensive plan. When we worked with uh Pace, was that a lot of the information that Pace needed, it required our staff to do the work, to be able to compile the information to them, provide it to them so that they can take and do what they wanted. If you take a look at um specifically task three's, task, the information in task three and the information needed in task five, this is all information that they're gonna need from our staff.
Right.
So, once our staff is already gathering this information, whether they give it to Kellen to assemble, or they give it to a consultant. Right, anyway. Let's at least try to use the staff we have and see how we're doing, we also are hopeful that, you know, we have some really talented summer interns that come in. And we're beginning to think that this might be a nice project to be able to um give Kellen some terrifically, you know. Great kids to work with and.
And as long, as long as that four or five month waiting period to get to that point, as you said, it can be simultaneous.
Of course.
Right.
It's not as if now waiting for interns for May, June to roll around
No.
stops or holds other progress elsewhere.
Right. Exactly.
Right, so like, for instance, sidewalk master plan, making advancements on that, right, because that's, that's Kellen's area too.
Right. Yes.
Right, so, so Kellen does the mapping on it, however, we do have interns who come in and actually
Indeed.
um, identify the property owners, the dimensions of the property, um, sizes, you know, capture all that information on um, on CAD drawings along with Terry Rowe from engineering, so again, we've got a couple of engineering interns that, that we sort of have our eye on and we're sort of hopefully gonna join up to them for the summer, we've got a lot of work coming up to do.
Right, so you, so you believe that Kellen and whatever additional staff under him and interns and so forth, will have the bandwidth to go and work on this?
Right, and if we find that, you know, we don't, it will be obvious to us pretty early on and we'll take it.
You can always spend more money.
We can, we can always gauge and see whether or not we need to.
And the only, I agree with you just a little bit, but I will say, I don't wanna figure out in September that we need another hands, because then we're not getting it done in twenty twenty.
Right.
And we'll know, right, we'll know before that.
But we need to figure this out like the next three months, if we're not being successful and then being low on pivot, because then we lose our time.
That's fair.
Right, yeah.
And I also would echo what you just said, Jill, I, I did double down on something you said that I've mentioned Ike and the commission. When I look at the document we paid for twenty or ish years ago, I don't think it's a particularly useful document, because it's a third party's views of our community,
Yeah.
which isn't what we need, we need to take the voice of this community and put it, and that's why I said, we're renting a set of hands.
Mm-hmm.
You guys, meaning the third party, write down what we're telling you, don't, we don't need you to editorialize, so in that regard, the resource that we need doesn't need to be quite so skilled, it just needs to be someone who's gonna help pull all this information together.
Right, but I, I, I also think that the, um, that the outreach is something that, you know, that's.
No, that I agree with you as well.
That's very important.
Yeah, that's, that is really not our. So, can we just talk about the outreach for a second?
Yes.
When we did all the charrettes for the master comp plan, town comp plan.
Yes.
So, so what was the word you said?
Charrette. Charrette, like the public meetings where we had it, it's, at, at all the schools, we had a lot of them.
It's French for public meetings.
So, um, we talked about open spaces and parks, but I think, did we talk about it specifically, what people would like to see? Or was it general that people just want open parks and open spaces?
That'd be cool, that's a good question.
Do you remember?
I, I don't remember, um.
Because that would be interesting to go back to, because if there were specific comments, I sort of feel like one, you know, they had different groups talking about
Oh, we shouldn't move on, that's for sure.
different concepts.
Right.
And I, I recall that one of them did talk about parks and open spaces and what people were looking for in order to incorporate that into our comp plan, so that would be something also, if we could pull that up, that would be a lot of information that we've already done and that.
So that feedback has been memorialized in minutes or something like that.
Right. Well, not minutes, but it would have been through, yeah.
Notes.
Yeah, they could have.
Um, the other thing that we talked about was actually creating, um, a master plan work group.
The pace, things would have that.
Okay.
And we were hoping that that would include Ike and that, um, if there's maybe another member of the recommission, um, that you could tag.
Yeah, we would look at putting together a little bit of it.
Right, we were hoping maybe, um, we, we noted that the conservation board, um, and their, um, focus on open space sort of overlapped with this comprehensive plan, and so we were hoping for, um, if you take a, if you take a look at task two with the, you know, see parks, open space and facility maintenance, so, um, one of the things that the conservation board is actually charged with is an open space inventory and, um, a master plan for the future of acquiring open space. So as we were going through this at a staff level, you know, it dawns on us that not, that these committees don't exist in silos, you know, they don't, you know, they overlap. And we should encourage them to be talking to each other, so we were hopeful that maybe Karen Anton or another member of the conservation board, um, she's the chair, would, uh, would work with us on this, uh, we wanted to make sure that we, um, had representatives from, um, our seniors, our preschoolers, our athletic groups, our, um, our hikers, um.
Yeah, we would, we would look to put a small group together to help us form, you know, the, the, the master plan and the recommendations, so.
That's a problem, yeah.
Um, you know, we're not looking to have a huge party, and, um, you know.
Right.
Well, I think there's a balance between, you know, there's, there's a, a working group that actually governs the development of the, of the work product, and then there's
So.
a broader group of people that have a voice in the process for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And I just think, you know, anytime you're actually trying to advance, um, an action-oriented project, I think that group has to be smaller to make sure that you're
Right, yeah.
not diffusing responsibility across too wide of a group, but I, I think maybe there's kind of a tiering effect of
Completely, yeah.
Yeah.
let's make sure that those people's voices are heard and are part of, whether they're invited to the meetings or whatever else, and then a slightly smaller group that might be like,
Mm-hmm.
you know, okay, here's what we're gonna include, here's what, you know, so decision-oriented.
Well, there's like the committee and then the working group of the committee, so.
Yeah, whatever words we wanna use, yes, like, there's two different groups there that I think need some definition.
But I think that instead, other than internal people who we will place on that committee with your recommendations, I think we should put it out to the public to see who's interested and have people apply, as opposed to appointing people.
To a, the decision-making part of that?
Not the, not the decision-making part, to the larger group, the committee who's gonna give the, um, things.
I mean, I, I frankly would imagine these as being public meetings anyway, where we would just advertise them and anyone with a voice who wants to.
I think that's probably a, that.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, because when we did, it's gonna, it's a large process and you need somebody to head up different groups. You do, and if, you know, much like we did with the comp plan, where if you have somebody who wants to look at the parks and what additional offering we can put in the parks, you may put one person in charge of that who can do work in that area and can supervise a group of citizens who are concerned about the hiking trails and the parks, and then you may have another person who's more concerned about playgrounds and you put them in charge of that and whatever else may come up, I'm just throwing things off the top of my head.
But this will be part of our public outreach though.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
Well, I think it is part of the public outreach, but it's actually broader, because it helps to have somebody make that concise, the public outreach is gonna be the entire community, I think should be public outreach.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
To reach everybody, you're not gonna work with the entire community, you need a smaller group.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think what you just described sounds like a lot of structure that is gonna slow that down. I think the, the need to distill that information is in part why you pay a third party and in part, you know, the, the difference between one person who's the voice of those who use the hiking trail versus just listening to everyone who uses the hiking trail and then having the entire committee read that feedback. I, I don't, I don't know why you tier that further, that just adds an unnecessary amount of, of, you know, process to something that I think can be more streamlined.
I just think it's a way to synthesize public comment, because the public is well, going to want to have a say in all of this.
Yeah, of course.
And I think you, the groups, I think may be helpful as a way to synthesize that, but, you know, that's up to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're still saying the same thing, that we wanna hear from all those constituencies and part of the outreach needs to focus on how best to get in touch with them. In some cases, it's gonna be obvious, right, like youth sports leagues, they have an organization behind them, whereas a passive use activity like that,
Right.
they don't have as much organization, so, part of the goal of this working group, committee, whatever word we wanna use, needs to be, and identify those different stakeholders and to say, here's the best way to get in touch with that group of stakeholders, and we might decide that it's different for one use group than a different use group.
But I think what you're talking about, the two of you, is actually a critically important point, which is that before we undertake this process, you have to, you have to figure out what you believe the best government structure
Yeah.
for it is going to be, and, you know, I think be valuable for us to be able to take a look at that.
Sure.
Give feedback on it, I think ultimately it's up to you, um, but, you know, it, I think because there's a large component of it that has to do with public outreach and making sure that everybody's informed and involved in the process and based on the experience that we've had with the comprehensive plan and the feedback we can give you based on that, I think it'd be valuable for you to just get.
Yeah, no, it's totally fair, and I think, um, uh, you know, that, there's an interesting dovetail which we've kind of skipped over, which is this is a project born out of, you know, the wrecked and parks department. We're talking about it being, in some ways, a subcommittee extension of the commission, we're not talking about having all seven commissioners involved in that as well. So I think, to your point, we need to figure out the right orientation of those two groups, which we've said is probably two commissioners and then a couple of other key stakeholders in the community, and so we'll bring that back, I think that's step one, is who is that group?
Yeah. I mean, you, you would put that in your RFP anyway, you know, so even if we end up going with town.
So, if we're not doing an RFP though, it's.
Yeah, but even if you go with town hall staff, it, you know, it might make sense to go through the discipline of thinking about what group gone in the RFP and you would have had
I agree with that.
a description of the governance process and how to sit down and debate.
Yeah, so I think we'll make our next step to define that group of, you know, that working body. My MO would be to lean towards the direction of there being, you know, five people on that, two of which are commissioners, three of which are others, and then I think the next step is to get to Lisa's point, which is to, then we need to identify our different stakeholder groups and and come up with a plan of action for how we wanna reach out to them, realizing that we're not gonna be doing the outreach, that's what we're hiring a third party for, but to understand the connection points to all the different stakeholders, as Jill was starting to enumerate, of which I'm sure there were many more, right?
Yeah, and, and I think the biggest challenge is gonna be is that there's a segment of the population that we're missing altogether, because they're not in, you know, they're not involved in youth sports or they've just moved into town and they're just sort of, you know, maybe, you know, they're not quite on our radar yet.
Yeah, there's gonna have to be some sort of general population, right?
Right, yeah.
But, um, but the voices, I mean, the other one that comes to mind are, are dog owners, we're just.
Oh, come on, yeah, sure, dog owners, they.
But, but they, we.
You don't need to worry, they will seek you out.
Well, we, we learned that, um, about a year and a half ago, so anyway, the point is there are these communities that, one way or the other, as long as we know how we're gonna tap into them,
Right.
they will make themselves heard, and then there are other groups that.
Right.
I think once you send that initial salvo to, to the community, you'll get quick gauge of who wants to be involved and who doesn't
Yeah.
seem to be too interested, but, uh, certainly I don't expect it to be as, like the comprehensive plan in terms of the amount of people who'll be involved, but I do think there's a lot of people are here for the reason that they do like this bucolic and recreational opportunities and just being here, that you are gonna get an, an exceptional amount of people who wanna at least opine or have their voice heard or engaged.
I hope so. I hope.
Yeah, I mean, not to the comprehensive plan level, I think that's much more, I mean, there's so much, so many pieces.
Everyone has a, everyone has a piece of skin in the game, not necessarily to the same degree.
Right. Right, so this may be, there's some people, some people don't care.
Yeah.
But you do wanna make, we do wanna make sure we have a good cross-section of people.
That might be, right.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
And not just people with young families who are using the fields and the sports, but to make sure we have our seniors involved and
Yeah.
dog owners or whoever it may be.
Yeah, no, absolutely agree with that, um, yeah. All right, well, I think we've got an action plan, probably won't wait until the next one of these to share that with you guys, but maybe we'll
Yeah.
Yeah.
use our February meeting to try to draw that one out and look for follow-up maybe in the next month.
Which, which, which Wednesday is it? Which, which day, what's your February meeting?
Uh, it's actually on a Tuesday, it's next Tuesday this month, because we just scheduling wise, do it on Tuesday night, so.
And, um, the, you have a vacancy on your committee, I know it's not on our agenda, but, um.
We got two.
Right, two, so, I've heard, I think I passed your only two resumes, three, two?
Well, there was one that was back in the fall, and that never panned out.
Right. Oh, okay.
And then the latest one you sent me, she's going to, her plans to come Tuesday.
Okay, that's great.
I think there's another one that has not sent you an application, because she's attending the meeting first, so I think we do have two potential.
Okay. Wow, that would be fabulous, okay, because that was gonna be my question as to whether, whether or not you think that we need to, uh.
I spoke with someone who may have submitted, I don't know, we can discuss.
Not to rec.
To rec, yeah, no, separate, that's a different, totally different person.
To. Okay, no, so I, yeah, I don't know.
Someone we can discuss, right.
All right, so, you have any?
Yes, um.
My, uh, my suggestion, which I know I said the idea is an aside, but I'll mention to all of you guys, this is, you know, I think the collective view of the commission on, on membership is, as Lisa, you were just doing, to think about the constituency of this group a little bit differently in the future and as we look across the community, when you see people who have a particular alignment of interest that might not, you know, might have a specific label, but isn't parks. Remember, that recreation piece of this really matters, so a couple of ideas that come to mind is, we've got our, um, now I'm forgetting the name of it, um, there's a, a, a group of people that were very much involved in the playground, um, and I'm blanking on the name.
Epic.
Epic, thank you. So you've got a group of people with a very specific set of needs and interests in the community, whose needs very much align with our parks and recreation mission.
Sure.
And look for folks who have that bottled energy and say, not just necessarily to have them aligned to, uh, their, that specific topic, but then to say they could also make real, you know, important use in a wreck and parks capacity as well.
Right, so, you know, again, talking, thinking in terms of, of breaking like the silos of committees, you know, and
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
doing a better job of, and I'm talking about the town board, doing a better job of advertising or, or, um, alerting people to recommission meetings and encouraging, you know, epic and conservation board members to take and attend and just, you know.
Sure. Well, and, and on the membership point, we're saying the same thing in a different way. If you get, you know, an application for a committee or, you know, group or whatever, and you're interviewing people, keep that in the back of your mind, that maybe that person could serve a, a purpose on our, on our group as well, because I think historically,
Right, right.
with a couple of exceptions, it has leaned towards, I forget who said it.
Young families.
Yes, and we had Stan, who, who had a great senior voice on, on the group, and then there are, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Right. Kevin would have.
Kevin.
Kevin as well, yeah, and so I think we should keep that in mind, when you're getting those applications, they might have self-identified for X, but there's a, a line of sight as well to whatever we do.
Yeah.
Anything else on the master plan that we should cover? Were there any questions about that outline?
All right. No, so actually, um, yeah, I'm just, you know, as, as we're, I, I got this fabulous, um, response to our summer interns. And I'm just, um, you know, they, they start relatively early, you know, they're available as, you know, some of them aren't available as of May to be able to begin, because there really is a ton of work, like, like work that can be done here.
Yep.
But hopefully we'll know before May, as to whether or not that's the route we're going in terms of.
Right, but, but even the assets and the issues and things like that, these are all things that, you know, need to be.
We're gonna have to.
We'll be set up for that, right.
Yeah, so, and that's all information, yeah, we're gonna have to provide.
Right, we have to do it either way.
Right, and a lot of that is, like, that pass there would be, you know, the assets and the space and the, you know, that's gonna come from
Right.
our department and my staff, myself and my parks guys, as the foundation, and then what we get from public outreach will add in, but you know, a lot of that information we have already, so I don't have to wait to May for, you know, help from interns and things like that, a lot of this stuff will start putting together and
Right. Right.
I'll work with Kellen as, as far as, you know, formalizing all the information, but we'll, we'll, we'll have some.
Okay, good.
Yeah, exactly, so, in part, yes, but then, you know, when it comes to, you know, doing a spot analysis of the opportunities and the threats pieces, like, that's critical and that's not something you're gonna be able to assign to a summer intern.
Right.
No, no, absolutely. Yeah, okay. So, I just wanna recap what our timeline is as far as for the working group for the master plan and then
Yep.
um, assessing if the work that we've done, I guess, April-ish per se, just based on what we can get completed and then if we have to figure out hiring like a third party, is that when we assess our progress?
From my point of view, the idea suggested is that we will be the, I will be the canary in the coal mine, I'll be keeping track, track on, on Ike as I usually do,
Yeah.
you know, twice a month, and if we feel like that's, that timeline is not holding up and we're not getting the support, then call it noise.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and, yes, in the next month, I'll make sure that you guys hear back from us as to the governance structure, I
Yeah.
hopefully it sounds like we're all supportive enough of this that we'll proceed, sort of, get started anyway, because there's just, you know.
Right, if, if that's okay with you, we, we were gonna hit the full running, so, the, the preliminary stuff.
Yeah, so I think we should do that anyway, and, and there was one other point to the timeline which I've now lost, but yes, those seem like the most urgent actions.
The, the two commissioners and the, that, that five-member
Yeah.
a governance committee, um, is this something that you're gonna talk about next week or?
So what I'm saying is, we'll agendize that for our Tuesday meeting, and that's the feedback that I'll share.
Perfect.
I think that's a pretty easy conversation to come out of, like, we'll finish the meeting, we'll have a plan, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, okay. Mm-hmm.
What we probably will come back right away with is then the kind of second tier to that, which is how we engage community members.
That, that's fine, I just wanna know who that five is, so that, that we can start, you know, this is a little bit of feedback, a little bit of, you know, um,
Yep. Yep.
um, keeping track of where we are and just making sure that, that we don't go off track without, you know, tapping in, so I know.
Yeah, once we identify that group, we'll have to establish some sort of regular cadence of, of.
Definitely.
So, we're saying then that an RFP is not necessary, or that we haven't figured out yet what we, what we would need to RFP for?
No, no, no.
I think the latter, right.
So, um, so we knew that the outreach was, um, was something that we definitely wanted to RFP, and, um, with the, um,
Okay.
we know that there have been some communities that already issued an RFP, Scarsdale was one of them.
They're working, they're, yeah.
Oh, they're working on it, right, I'm sorry, so.
They're working, he's actually hoping I come out with mine first, you know.
Yeah, Saratoga?
There's King of Chicken, I have Saratoga and Ithaca, um, so.
So we're gonna take a look at those, again, larger communities than ours, but when it comes to outreach, we didn't wanna have to reinvent the wheel, so I'd like to take a look at those as, as a starting point, um, and see what we can borrow from them and improve upon
Sure.
to sort of tailor it to what we're looking for.
Yeah, Saratoga's was very specific, they actually listed the questions that they wanted asked in the RFP, which was. Yeah, Saratoga's was very specific, they actually listed the questions that they wanted asked in the RFP, which was interesting.
But, you know, that's an interesting way to go, because maybe that's, maybe that gives us a framework for, you know.
Well, it gives us a good idea of the right way to ask a question, I guess.
Yeah. Right, no.
Or the wrong way.
Or the wrong way.
Or the wrong, and listen, if you don't wanna take that tack, then you know right off the get-go, this is way to, you know, I'd rather have a consultant come in and tell me what their ideas are as opposed to us.
Yeah, I mean, again, going back to Lisa before, I I would rather us all be more directive, because I think we know probably better than they do in regards to that.
Right.
But I'm more interested in the means and the media, cause I think that's, you know, in this day and age, that's the the harder thing.
Mm-hmm. Right, yeah. That's the key, right.
You know, we're not sending postcards out to the community and having them send the data.
No, and nobody's answering their phone, and so, yeah.
Though on our.
Right.
Another, another form I just, um, Sabrina and had shared with me last week was this company called Metro Quest, they've done a survey.
Yep.
Yeah, we talked.
Yeah, we talked about it.
And don't forget that in connection with the comp plan, we actually already paid for a survey that was never utilized, that we can use for this purpose. Yep, we actually talked about that as well.
Yeah, okay.
We talked about that, yeah.
Cool.
Alright, okay, that's that's number one.
Fun stuff. What else?
Okay.
Next.
Slide the city, that's on your.
Yes, it's number seventeen, we're gonna get there.
Okay, good, good, good.
It's it's right next to the bed race that Donna wants to do.
Alright, well, we've got a great team.
Yeah.
Alright, we just have to take possession of um, of South Greeley from Mother County, and I think we'll be okay. I was just talking.
Yeah, that's the only.
Details.
That's that's that, good.
But four.
Well, yeah, but four.
But four, um, okay, um, a progress report on the playground and basketball court. This mild weather has been amazing.
Awesome.
So, um, they've already um, poured and they're done with the retaining wall that goes around the basketball court. And today they were um, framing, I don't know if they, I don't think they actually poured, but they framed the curve.
If they did, I didn't see it.
Yeah, uh, framed the curve for the the curving along the um, along the parking lot, and they're, I, they're pouring it tomorrow, perhaps?
Yeah, I think they wanna get it done before this weekend.
Yeah, um.
They're pouring what, the curb?
Right, it's a curb, it's a concrete curb along the um, along the parking lot, and then they'll be able to put a a guardrail next to it.
For sure.
But they're like basically doing all site work save for the asphalt, because the plant is done up until April, I mean, maybe it'll be in early year,
Yeah, it's a problem. It may.
But they've really been able to move ahead. They, um, we have a a construction meeting tomorrow, which I have to tell you, um,
These don't change.
after the construction meetings that we've done, this is, it's like.
Cake walk.
Exactly, the funniest thing, they come in, they tell us, oh yeah, we're ahead of schedule, you know, no problem.
I keep telling us, cause you're dealing with recreation, that's how we roll.
I'm telling, the place is as clean as a pin, have you seen it out there? It's like unbelievable.
It's great, yeah.
Um, and yeah, it's it's just been a very different.
So the next time you need to overhaul downtown, we'll run it.
Obviously, never, never.
No, it's fine, we're both gonna be dead by then.
I will be long dead by then, so yeah, absolutely, yeah. But we should leave a note somewhere prominently, next time, please use rec.
We've already committed to the rec department to do it, sorry, guys.
No, please, believe me, we would give it to you at any point in time, even now.
So, so, we could, we could move the playground along pretty far, but we're still gonna be, unless he's turned stuck, we're still gonna have to wait for for the,
Probably like, we're probably used to right now too.
Uh, what's called, to open the asphalt, to open, and it'd be stuck in it, but.
Asphalt.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right, and that's, and actually the way the the road's just planning out right now, like, that's almost gonna be the last thing that gets done. You know, they're they're trying to get everything done before that, especially taking advantage of the mild weather, so that really all they gotta come in and do is that asphalt, you know, and and be ready to go, so.
And the equipment's still gonna come whenever it comes, it's not coming earlier.
It has to come after the asphalt.
Yeah.
So it's a summer twenty twenty, this summer?
Hmm?
Okay.
Yeah.
We're very confident in it.
What is the, what is the uh, projected?
Is it June days?
Well, I think June fifteenth was the, right, that I.
So it was the date we gave them, and they're, they'll make that easily, okay.
So, don't check.
Great, we're just gonna leave that there.
Yeah, we are a hundred percent on dates, that were through February twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
So.
Awesome, that's exciting.
Um, and the Millwood Rec Field, so, um, Mill, so on the, on the upcoming um, town board meeting, we're gonna hold a public hearing on adopting um, best value, which is really gonna give us an opportunity to um, uh, take in, bid out, issue the RFP for electrical work on the um, on the Millwood Rec Field, which is something that we weren't gonna have under our current RFP, our procurement policies, so we're actually very excited about that. Um, we've reached out to Yorktown, we've gotten ahold of their RFPs, we saw how they did it. Um, we know that there are a couple of vendors that we're interested in, um, and we're gonna reach out to them. And so we're just waiting to have this long place, and then we'll be able to take initiative and.
Get our ducks in a row.
Get our ducks in a row and get ready to go.
Now, the work itself, the main work is planned for later in the year because of the disruption to the property.
Well.
Yes. Right.
Yes.
So we we're, we are hoping that winter twenty twenty, we're gonna do the work and then it will be ready for spring twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Um, so, uh, the only thing that that's a, just a little challenging to us is that, um, in addition to the to the field, the the lights on the field, is we need to light the parking lot. So that's like a different electrical, that, you know, supplier, um, so it's just, it's fine, we'll work it out.
Right.
It's just a little bit different than than what some of these other purely, you know, rec field light RFPs have been, but it's okay, we've got it handled.
And the other thing that we haven't talked about as a group since the last time both the commission and the board were together, is that we've pushed off the playground piece of this a bit, um, in part due to timing, in part due to cost and other logistics, right?
Right. 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 Yeah, um, we haven't pushed off the um, tennis court work though, so that does not have to wait for the rest of stuff.
Correct. That's right.
Yeah, no, and I'm I'm working on a couple of quotes, just, yep, yeah.
Right, some tree removals and things like that, okay, so, yeah, we're hoping that the tennis court is gonna be um, uh, resurfaced nice, yeah.
In the summer, cause we have some spring tennis programming, and so we're gonna try to find that pocket between when that wraps up,
Oh, okay. That's true.
When our fall programming starts, so.
Suppose you're thinking you'll do the tennis courts this summer?
Yeah.
We, we don't have to wait for the rest of the project, it really is separate and apart.
Right, yeah.
Cool.
Do we have a, maybe I'm late to this, do we have a scope of what we're planning to do at the, you know, in the Millwood, I I understand the reviewing the tennis courts and and lighting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can give you a copy of the grant proposal, if you want, it has everything, absolutely.
Thank you, great.
But it was just.
But but we should, but we should take that then and and just create a really high-level, you know, sort of phasing and timeline against that, right?
Yeah.
So that, because what we've just discussed is sort of changes that we've made subsequent to the grant proposal, so, you know.
Oh, the grant, okay, I see what you're saying.
I was just gonna comment on that, we should, there is, I think it's just the playground and the grading related to that that we've put off, right?
Yeah, that's.
Yes. Yeah, and and mostly because, um, there are ADA issues with the sighting of the playground. And so that site work, um, just threw the project off.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And the cost related to it isn't something you're, that you view as at all in question as being in the twenty-one budget.
Yeah, that's something that we can, yeah, we can handle that in the twenty-two one budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what we do is, yeah, maybe we can, but we've, but if we separate it out, the 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 site work alone and the um,
Get more grant loans.
ADA either compliance or exemption because of the uh, the grades out there, is something that just takes a long time. And we just, unfortunately, we know this from around town, and we didn't wanna complicate the um, the lighting of the fields with it, so.
Right.
But so can we put together just this sort of high, high-level kind of milestone in time, I'm I'm talking some super simple, like six lines,
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But just, you know, then say when we, you know, estimate at this time that we think that this will be complete by.
Absolutely. Um, and when we um, when we spoke to the state regarding the grant, we did talk to them about um, pushing the playground off.
One thing that we're trying to get better at, so I'd say this as much Ike is to you guys, but just kind of put a little bit of understanding of what's in our head, is being better at communicating to the community what we're doing in these in these areas. We really didn't do that around the play, the playground basketball courts, it was kind of like, all of a sudden we're doing it, you know, it was like, wait, wait, wait. And so in the case of something like this, where we've got a timeline, it's a little bit out in the future, but so far, not so far out in the future, I think just putting that on the rec page and posting it to Facebook and stuff, so let people know what's coming.
Oh, that's a, that's a great, that's a great idea.
Absolutely. And that's why I wanted to understand what's in scopes, cause I'm, if if I'm unaware of what's in scope and I'm paying attention, there's a lot of people who are not paying attention.
Yeah. Right, and I don't think.
Have no idea what's coming.
Been shared with the public, that the playground is getting postponed, that was, has not been shared.
No, really, it really.
It's, yeah, it's not really postponed, it's just the feeling.
But I don't even think most of the community knows about the changes. I think, you know, meaning Senator did a presser, but like, I mean, think about the lack of coverage for some, I mean.
Thank you.
Sorry. But I mean.
We've, Lawrence didn't get this one, too.
I know, but I mean, in just in terms of like the mindshare of people, they consume information when they're ready to consume information, not when we tell them to consume information.
Right.
Yeah.
So by putting it somewhere up on a website, the next time they go to look for resources, it's up there.
Yeah, okay. And and I think really what happened was is that, you know, the the downtown infrastructure was just so constantly present,
Yeah.
um, that it sort of monopolized everybody's attention, because on a staff level, we have been working on the, that, you know, the playground, basketball court.
Yeah, I agree with that.
A long time, yeah.
A long time, um, so, you know, when when finally, you know, the.
Probably a couple of years.
Right, what I, what I meant is, we wouldn't have put something up on the rec department website three years ago, cause we didn't know when it was gonna actually, you know, come to fruition, right?
That's it.
So now in this case where it's, it's not subject to all these complicated contingencies, and it's like, we're doing it in the fall, coming soon to a theater near you, and we're willing to advertise.
Yeah, 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 no, no, fair enough, yeah, that's great, and yeah, we're actually in a position to do that, but yeah.
Okay, cool.
Unfortunately, it became obvious to us that ELQ had to get rid of their spoils yard, cause it was sitting on my basketball court, so, yeah.
It's okay.
Um.
Yeah, should we go?
Yeah, last but not least, mission statement and responsibilities. So, I'll refer you guys on however you wanna.
You want the intro topic?
Sure.
Okay, so I think the history of this uh, topic has several kind of tentacles, but it's best understood through the lens of, I think for as long as I've been on the commission, probably based on the conversations I've had, probably a lot longer, you know, there hasn't always been a lot of um, clarity on the part of the commission, especially around what I'll just simply put is, you know, what's our role? And I've brought up with a few of you guys that, you know, there's a, you could look to the statute and say, okay, here's the role of the rec commission. It's it's defined by statute, which, you know, at least when I was appointed, was one of the things we talked about a lot. It's it's sort of the exception and the rule that we've got this statutory commission that exists with certain responsibilities. But I don't think in practice we've exactly executed on that over time, and I think the two most important things are at a kind of, you know, at the level of us working together, so tying it all the way back to what you Ivy described as the goal of having these things in the first place, what we view as our mission in relation to the the broader community that you guys help deliver to our to our residents. Um, and more specifically as it relates to, I'll say, the physical things that we are caretakers of, the properties, the facilities. Both of those are things that we as a commission feel like we need some, we need some clarity, and I don't think we'll accomplish this is down to the, down to the studs in the course of just a single conversation, but I guess I'll share a few thoughts about what we see as our role. But then there's this other thing that I think needs to follow up, which is what do we actually think when it comes to physical things that the town owns, whether it's land or a facility, is our role in relation to them? Um, so let me start with the easier stuff, you know, I think the name itself should be pretty self-evident, but we think of our role as anything related to a, you know, physical piece of land that its purpose is played of any sort, right? Any, any place where you could go throw a frisbee, walk a dog, play with your kids, whatever it is, that feels like what a park is, whether or not the town board at one point in the last hundred years declared it to be a park. And then the second thing is that there's programming that we do, I mean, that's the recreation piece. And so whether or not it falls into a formal rec program, which I think is more obviously summer camps, is the seniors programs that we run, it's the evening, you know, there's like fitness and kind of physical activity stuff that we do, those are pretty clearly. But then we do a whole patchwork quilt of other stuff, like the Ragamuffin Parade, and um, and we've started to do some stuff at Chat Pack as well. All of those things kind of put together, they're programming, but then there are also other times where we do programming as a community that isn't necessarily run out of this department. So I feel like that's the ti, those are the times where where we tend to feel a little confused. And the most recent example of this was the Holocaust Memorial, which we, I do not wanna relitigate at this table. Um, but more generally, you know, that's our vision, if it's a passive facility for people to play, or if it's a facility or a program that we run for our community, it's always a little confusing to us when something doesn't end up in our purview. And so that's the conversation we wanna have, is to better understand your expectations for us, cause we always start from the assumption that it's in, and if it's out, get confused as to why. And then we can have the properties and facilities conversation second to that, but I'm curious in your reactions to that as a group, does that resonate with you? Are there clear exemptions to that that you think you you would handle differently, and and if so, why?
So I would just say, I'll start, cause I saw you about to start talking. Hold on, I'll just say, I agree with everything that you said um, on its face, and I think everything that you said makes a lot of good sense. Um, I do think that the process of coming up with the rec master plan is going to give us a lot more clarity about the responsibilities for the commission, because we're going to have very clear sort of projects, priorities, upcoming initiatives, goals, objectives, et cetera identified. And it's going to be quite clear that you're responsible for that implementation, because you've been responsible for putting our, you know, for putting the the plan itself together, so I think it it follows suit.
Right.
And I think in the absence of that master plan, there's been some ambiguity about what those priorities are, and so some of them have bubbled up from the town board, and some of them have bubbled up from you, and I think there has been a little bit of unclarity in the lap at times.
Yeah.
But I think that this process that you've outlined now is gonna really help us get to a much better place in that regard. The only thing I would say though, is that I do feel that Ike has a certain set of responsibilities that he's taken on on behalf of the town that are not necessarily the purview of the rec commission. So for example, Ike's maintaining all of these public properties now, so like the medians and the, you know, triangle up at King Street and one seventeen, you guys may have a role in terms of working with Ike to make sure that he's got the appropriate, you know, staffing and and equipment and whatnot to be able to fulfill those duties perhaps. But the ultimate responsibility and ownership for those kinds of things, I don't think falls to the rec commission necessarily. So I do think there's still some places where we have to.
So one way, I mean, not to get too, well, than an example, but you, one of the things I'd like is just a taxonomy around that, right? So, uh, we we separately define maintenance properties as opposed to activity properties, or something like that as a way to delineate that purview.
Sure.
Again, I I think the property piece of this is is harder to deal with and more complicated to deal with, so I almost wanna deal with that second.
Yeah.
And go back to the first thing you said, Ivy, I I'll I'll offer two thoughts for additional consideration. One is that the master plan will still only define what the master plan defines, and as I look backwards, I think it's also been about the, to quote Mr. Rumsfeld, the unknown unknowns, right? Like, things that are gonna come up, and I don't even know that it comes from the town board or the commission, it comes from the community. The community says, we want X, and my suggestion to you guys is to ask us to take recent, to take leadership and responsibility for delivering X when X is a recreation program, or X is a physical property, right? And that that goes right back to a memorial in town that that has a park component to it, that to us feels like it should be our purview. And if it's a program, if it's an event that the community's gonna sponsor, wouldn't that fall back to us? Again, not from like, you know, a, we want this land grab, but just in terms of like clarity and expertise, like theoretically, this comes back to my point about membership, this should be a group of people who are the most thoughtful, expert people in the community about running a recreation program in the broadest sense, not just sports leagues and the stuff we've already defined, you know what I mean?
Right.
So as it relates to events, are you like talking about like the summer concerts?
Which we do, yeah, yeah, I mean, I I, on the events front, so what would be one that doesn't come up, or or that that we don't run?
Yeah.
Community Day.
Community Day.
Well, that's rotary, right?
We don't run it either.
That's that's actually not true, so the town does run it, they run it with Rotary, and it's mostly DPW and parks that do it.
Yeah.
And um, so i- if I could interject further, because I'm I'm concerned about this list, if this is your understanding of.
Sure. It was a way to get people talking, Jill.
Okay, because um, I think you, I I think it's backwards.
Right.
So the rec commission has the properties that the town board has bequeathed or given to it, right?
That's what the code says, I.
So. This is actually a rec book, and it lists the dedicated parks.
Yep.
Gedney, Millwood Park, Smith Park, Ward Park, Whipewill, Art Center, Community Center.
Right.
And then it specifically, as the page talks about town-owned property, and town-owned properties are those that have been acquired by the town for purposes of preserving open space, but they haven't been dedicated as parkland, and therefore are not under the authority of recreation and parks.
Yeah.
And includes Glacier and the Duck Pond, and there's others.
Right.
Yeah. Can't even include the train station, there's the open park in front.
That's not.
You know, I don't know that rec is gonna be in charge of the farmer's market and everything else that's going on there.
Right, nor nor was recreation consulted when the farmer's market came to the town board and asked for space to be able to be there. The the other thing is, is that, um, and and maybe I I need to defer to Nick on this, because I I'm, I never thought about it before, but, um, parks is sort of like DPW. They they work with the town to take and maintain town property. They assist my DPW in the Inningwood Pump Station, the Alpine Pump Station. I would never think of that as, excuse me, something under the auspices of of the rec commission. The parks is working as a maintenance arm of the town, um, in assisting us with all those properties. And I never really thought that this is something that had to be cleared by the rec commission.
Right, so that was why I was saying to Ivy that I think there's the potential for a second taxonomy here, but I do think that the code is pretty deficient in spelling this all out, because the, so take, let me start with the first point you made. I don't think it makes any sense that Glacier is not a designated park. That doesn't make any sense to me. It's actually in the scope of the master plan and as are many other properties. Because how can you think about running a parks and rec program for the community if this patchwork quilt of only part of those properties is in the purview of that commission?
Because there is a separate trust that funds Glacier Arboretum, who is, um, which specifically designates that the conservation board, not the rec commission, oversee it and administer it.
Okay.
And so.
I think your analysis, thinking aloud makes sense, but there's a, there's an asterisk. What I'm what I'm gonna get to is, your analysis is sort of, if it's not designated elsewhere, then by default it's in the purview of of recs and parks.
That's not my analysis of the law, that's my analysis of what should be, not what is.
So I think right now, what it seems to be is is the opposite, which is it's not in unless it's in fact designated.
Yeah, I agree.
And, for example, most people probably would have no idea, that just example that you just gave, that there's a private trust or a separate trust funding this, and it's designated to the conservation board.
Including the conservation board.
Yeah, right. So so I think as part, we need to identify, maybe,
Now they don't.
And and I don't know if it's the right answer, but maybe designate more things and take things out. For example, I remember Ivy just said it before, the little green area on top of 117 and and 120, is that something really in your purview that you should be responsible for? No, but should another park be within your control if it's not designated by law elsewhere? Yes. So I don't know if the the thought process should be, if it's not, if it's not designated otherwise, it should be in. I think we collectively, meaning together, need to say, you know what, this should be in for the following reasons.
I agree.
This should not be in for the following reasons.
That is our MO, that we think the list is bad, not that we shouldn't have a list, it's that the list should be rethought.
Right.
And, you know, the other point I'll make.
Because like, you know, like the chat pack should automatically be in based on that theory. I mean, so many, you know, so many things we should be saying, well, should this be in, should it not be in? What advantage, what benefit it is to be run by rec, what may be to be run by someone else.
Right, and, you know, so a couple of other point, I.
But a back and forth dialogue about it, not just us saying this should happen.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I'd also agree that that if if it came across incorrectly, let me clarify. The MO here has never been the, the the default is that it's in and not out, it's that we have the wrong list, there should be a list. The other point that came to mind as Jill was talking is, you know, take the Glacier example. And I don't want to get too embroiled in a specific example, because it runs the risk of missing the point. But in that case, does that also mean that the rec department doesn't help maintain Glacier Arboretum? Of course it does, right? I mean, if something goes wrong, Ike's team is the one that does it. So, you know, we can have it deeded and 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 all that can give that final authority to the conservation board instead of the rec commission. But that still means, in my mind, the rec commission should be consulted about what we're planning, and it should be the rec's commission's input that has some involvement here. Not asking for authority, we're asking for purview and involvement, right? Because when I think about the breakdown here, it hasn't just, it has never, almost ever, probably never, been that we want to be the final word on something, it's that we want to be involved in the conversation. And there have been plenty of times where we haven't even been part of the conversation. And that's a problem, because if our goal is to execute on the vision of the parks and rec of the community, then we need at least to have a level of involvement. And that's where I think you could consider reworking what our purview is in a lot of ways, that isn't just the list of properties, but maybe it's a couple of different lists. Here's a list of properties where, yes, we have final say, here's a couple of lists of properties where, you know, we we should be consulted when something's being considered, or, you know, whatever. But my concern is the, is the wholesale leaving out of the commission in areas that are of relevance to our our focus.
That that's fair. I I think one of the issues that there will always be is because you're a separate commission statutory, and the town board has the reins of the purse strings.
Yeah.
It it it's it's very frequently, not always, it's going to be a a give and take, it has to be. Because you could be in control, for lack of a better term, but if it's not gonna be funded, you're in control of nothing. And if you're if you're not going to agree to something, we could fund something, and theoretically you could say, it's not gonna work, we're not gonna do it. So there has to be a back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, I, let let me, I'll leave me more, I don't think we have the authority to do a single thing on our own, with the exception of hiring him. You know, I mean, that's pretty much the only authority we have in the town code, is to hire a superintendent of rec. And everything else is is essentially advisory, or how, whatever word you want to use, but it's it's consultative in nature. But I still think the point is, I'd like to see us clarify that consultative relationship better, because that's been a point of break.
So then what's the purpose part of me, Nick, then? And and don't misconstrue my my question, or they're looking to disband anything. What what is the purpose of the statutory board as opposed to a committee if it's really just advisory in nature?
Honestly, I couldn't answer that question. I don't, I'd have to look into it. I think the purpose, the committees.
How many other communities are statutory boards as opposed to to committees? And please don't misconstrue this question, I'm just curious. It's not, I'm not looking to do anything, I mean, we're asking very.
Should have circulated.
I'm gonna say a reasonable question. If you're feeling that you're left out, and we have a, we, meaning future generations of the of the town board, whatever iteration it is, is one that controls the dollars, what what is, you know, what are we doing here? What's, how are we making this to be this successful for our community? How do we make it work in the right way? What's the advantage of this particular form? How do we make it more efficient and work in a smoother capacity?
Yeah.
And along the same lines, just the same question, because I was.
Not to take it down, just understand it, what are we doing, how are we making it work?
I was not gonna bring it up, because I didn't want it to be misconstrued, but since he just opened the door. You know, what, to what extent does the rec commission have authority to say, yes, we're doing this, or no, we're not doing this? Or does the town board always supersede that? And I just want to understand it, not to say.
Not the attorney there, but reading the code section, like I said, I think the only thing it really says we can do is hire.
Correct, yes. That's that's how it's been the practice, that's how the code is written. The language you have here is similar to what is in in other communities. If I recall correctly, we'd looked at this, a little less than half of the communities that we looked at had a rec commission, others had committees. At the end of the day, it's a policy decision as to what you're doing.
But I but I want to know what the difference is.
Third versus two thirds, is that what?
Yeah, I I would want to know what the differences, because I would assume one of the reasons, and maybe I'm wrong, the the authority is limited to that extent, is so that a board just can't do something willy-nilly, and because it's expedient, there needs to be another body consulted with to make sure that it's done for the best of the town. But if you're only advisory, what what is that, how how is that even further than that?
I, I think you're, I think you're you're applying a very logical structure to something that might not have that much logic to it.
Right, so maybe I'll, maybe, I'd like to know, not to disband, it's just on the record, I just want to know how we can make it work properly.
But you all are involved in the budgetary process too, at at least insofar as, you know, working with Ike to come up with the budget that you then bring to the town board. For other committees and boards, don't do that, that's a special power that's designated to you.
Well, but it's not a power, it's just a responsibility.
It's not, well, okay, it's a responsibility, yeah.
And so I, but that's actually, it's such a good segue, I don't want to detract and we can come back to this point. But to me, that's the ultimate, like, final point in the purview piece of this. Like, we are responsible for the entire, you know, we are responsible, with whatever word quotes around responsible you want to use, for the parks and rec department's budget, and working with Ike, and overseeing the work of that entire department. So if they're working on something, it's it's our thing for one reason or the other. You might say, well, he just cuts the grass, or Ike doesn't cut the grass, but someone cuts the grass, um, so you guys don't need to worry about that. But if if Jonathan's cutting the grass, and Jonathan's team is cutting the grass, then they can't be working on other stuff that we would want them to be working on. So it's it's a little bit of of, you know, easy come, easy go when it comes to saying something like, it's not, it's just maintenance. I understand your point, Jill, but if if that's a department that we're supposed to oversee, and those resources are being gobbled up by other things, then we can't do some things. I mean, that that's that's reality. So I, and that's, that all comes back to this point of advisoryship, like, I don't, we can, we should all be open to the idea that the words should be different, and the structure should be different, and whatever. But at the end of the day, I think what you should have, what I've seen in successful communities, is a group of people who are passionate about this area, that are dedicated to this area, because it's a critical of, you know, as I said to all of, well, the three of you when I, well, two of you when I interviewed, that I look at this community like any other community. You got infrastructure like roads, you have protection like police, and then you have parks and recreation. That's basically the three things that every tax-paying resident deeply has a has a skin in the game. Everything else is like, maybe, maybe not, but those are the things. So you have to take advantage of that group who has passion and interest and energy around it. Call it whatever you want, structure it however you want, but then, but don't make it a patchwork quilt. That's my request, because the more you patchwork it, it it's disengaging, because they don't even feel like they've got, you know, a seat at the table. And it also means that we don't know how to prioritize certain things, because if we might say we want to go do X, and we're already doing it somewhere else, or we're gonna go do it somewhere else, then why are we wasting our time? So.
Well, I think, hopefully you feel like you have a seat at the table, you're you're here.
I'm at the table.
You're sitting at the table. So hopefully you feel like you have a seat at the table. I think I would just ask you to give us the same consideration as well. So, you know, keep us informed about the things that you guys are are working on, so that, you know, we have a a general understanding of what your your priorities and and interests are. And I know that we'll go get to that as a part of this process. But also understand that the town board itself does not even necessarily know all of the things that perhaps you think that you have some attention to and and purview over. So, you know, a perfect example is that Glacier example, because that was an initiative that was worked out of the conservation board, and we did not know about. You knew about, but the town board did not know about. And so that sort of level of communication and understanding across boards, including the town board, is something that we're all gonna work towards and do better at.
Yeah.
With best intentions.
Never perfect, just making better.
Never perfect, right.
So I agree, so I, I mean, um, I think we've kind of level set from like the the, I still, I've said this to you, Ivy, directly, and I'll say it to all of you guys. I still think the commissions got a standing request that we come to some agreement over the coming months for year, or something like that, about what that purview is and how best to define it. So I know I heard some questions over here for Nick, if you want to ask him to pull some thoughts together about what that could be.
Right.
And, you know, I I'd even offer the suggestion.
Well, you know what, I think maybe if you can take back the list that you had sent us back in December, and maybe turn a more critical eye towards that, based on the conversation that we've had here tonight, and can give us sort of a, even just a sentence, this is why we think this is something that that falls under our purview. That would be helpful too, and we can use that as a starting point as well.
So what are you thinking along those lines about, um, you know, what I might call like a couple of different tiers of of involvements, like acknowledging?
However you want to propose it, I think just something that we can react to.
I would work for you.
It, you know, but if 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 what you said to the previous town board back in December was a preliminary cut and meant to generate conversation, you got us talking, we're in the conversation, but maybe if you want to take a a cut, you know, whatever kind of tertiary structure you want to put into place, and then, but just say that this is the reasons why we think that this makes sense, is something that, you know.
We have visibility into.
Got it. Cool.
May I ask, the detailed annual report, what is that?
Where are you reading that from?
Under, in in this.
From the town code.
On the town code.
Oh. Uh, oh, it's our responsibilities.
It's Part G, yep.
Yeah. Uh, that's a good question.
Yeah.
I think we would probably say that in the past, it's been done through a meeting.
Okay.
Uh, meaning every year that I've been on the commission, we've come before you guys and talked about what we've been working on, probably with less the frequency than Ivy teed up at the beginning of this, because I I do think it's intended a little bit more uh, as an act of dialogue, than the past, it's been more like a report out. But, um, it there's never, never been in my experience, and I've been here longer than you have, so probably not you. Any third, any sort of written report, Jill, have you seen us do that?
You've got it in the binder, you've got it in the green binder, there's old annual reports from like 2004, right? Or is it just the programming guides?
No, this is probably.
Ah. I don't think I've ever seen it.
We look forward to your annual report, it's, uh, it's late.
No, 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 I was just, I was not trying to put you on time.
Here's an annual report, it carries these.
Times number twelve.
Um, here, uh, in nineteen ninety-four, Douglas M. Kraus was elected to serve as a Newcastle Town Justice. Judge Kraus donates his annual salary to the Recreation Commission. The Recreation and Parks Commission is determining how to utilize these funds to benefit the residents of the community. That's it.
That's our annual bullet point, that's a hell of a report.
Was there a twenty ninety four? There we go.
Is he on the bench? No, no, that's.
He's still on the bench.
No, I know he's still here, I I forgot, that's not town courts.
He's still going, sorry.
He's still donating to the.
Yeah.
Anyway, I I did point out, we actually do this on some level within it. So I think to the extent, you know, your point, Ivy, about you guys hearing back from us, I think we could also introduce a little bit more of that to our process. And, you know, you guys have those monthly reports that you guys get, so we could kind of not send all of that their way, but like, whenever we get together, just bring recent updates like that.
Minutes, you know, they take minutes of the meeting. Where are your minutes posted?
Where they posted.
Yeah, do you post them?
No.
Maybe we should stop posting them.
I didn't know there was a spot for posting.
I would not recommend using the minutes as the basis for staying up to speed on what we're doing, though. I mean, meaning it's it's dense reading, so like, we could, we could send a bullet point summary of what we've been up to.
Really? We we find that it's fascinating.
When we have them, we love them.
I may not have been directed at you, I was directed at you. Anything else, guys?
You're back to Wednesdays after this one.
Yeah, it's all yours. We made, made a couple copies of that by there.
We've been really struggling with work travel on the commission, so I really think it's been a living, breathing thing.
Okay.
If you want me to loop you into scheduling.
You'll, you'll get to schedule, because two, obviously Tuesday, then they'll go to office for you.
Sure. Yeah, and that's the exception.
Why you have something else on Tuesdays?
Well, I could come there with, she's a commission.
We'll start looping you into the schedule.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike. Safe home?
Thanks.
I like the beard, by the way.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, that's why she's calling Mike. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Hollis, Hollis definitely recognized you now.
Maybe he stands up.
I'll have to read a few more times.
You there?
Thank you.
I don't know.
No, she wasn't on the board yet.
You know, Hollis, like, so is it like, where's Ike, who's Ike, and Ike's standing right there.
Sitting next to her, she was talking to someone, like, you know, we just hired a superintendent, you know. You should talk to him, you should, and we're like, he's sitting right next to you. Have a good night. Next is Fox Hollow Wastewater Treatment Plant. Ivy, you want to give the update? Want me to give the update? You know, I saw Joe.
Oh.
This was dense.
To read.
Literally, literally dense, not just, I mean, literally dense.
I don't, you know, I just assumed everybody would come in, so come join us.
What are you gonna do to us for us?
Nothing.
Give you an update?
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, come sit.
Thank you.
So maybe let's start, and we'll go around the table, just so we introduce ourselves to you. I've met you all before, I'm Ivy Poole.
Jeremy Salan.
Jason McPhee.
Lauren Casco, I'm Jill's assistant. Christina Pave, Town Clerk, Tax Receiver.
Harold Ware from Riverwoods, I'm the vice president.
Joel Spire, Property Manager for Riverwoods.
God, Deborah Fogg from Riverwoods.
Mick Ward Willis, Town Attorney.
Joel Shapiro, Town Administrator.
Lauren Levin, Town Board.
Lisa Gatz, Town Board.
So, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much, I'm inviting us.
Yeah, this is good, it's great. So, um, we've been at a lot of meetings, um, a couple of which, actually, one of which at least you've attended with, at the county. But we realized that the town board hadn't been brought up to speed with all of the efforts that had been made in the situation. So, Riverwoods and Yeshiva, um, share the Fox Hollow Wastewater Treatment Plant that treats their wastewater, and it is one of the two actually worst operating.
We just learned about this year, yeah, one of the two worst.
Plants, and it's just a county, congratulations, we, you won the prize.
You did it.
Yes.
Not you, you're you.
Well, not you, yeah, not, not you.
You're solving the problem.
Thank you.
So, um, um, I just realized that actually the letter isn't in here. That's okay. Um, so, um, uh, we had a meeting with the county um, after representatives from Riverwoods reached out to the county and Mount Kisco to ask if there was some way to resurrect the twenty-year-old plan to take and divert sewage from Fox Hollow Waste Water Treatment Plant um, through sewer pipes to Mount Kisco and Nivon Station. Um, as a result, we had a meeting um, early in January, uh, gosh, members of New York City D E P. Um, environmental facilities from the county, uh, the mayor and um.
County planning.
Yes, uh, county planning was there, McCafflitz was there, um.
Mount Kisco.
Mount Kisco was there, we were there, Riverwoods was there. Um, and it was, it was a big room, it was a very crowded room, um, and it was a very encouraging conversation. And um, basically the county asked us to sit down with Mount Kisco and try to figure out a way that we could find a path forward. Um, we did that, we met here in a smaller group, uh, Sabrina, Ivy, um, Ed Brancotti, uh, Mayor of Mount Kisco.
Gina Pinkerton.
Pinkerton, I cannot get her name, I, I work on that. Um, and uh, we sat down with Marion Papa from the, um, from the county. Um, and we um, came up with a reasonable, what we feel is a reasonable proposal to be able to move forward. And one of the key elements of moving forward was um, asking the county to accelerate the timeline for constructing the relief sewer. So the relief sewer is, um, I guess I should back up. There is a choke point, um, between.
In the Sawmill Sewer District.
It's right around Han's Place and it, um, it's where a larger pipe goes into a smaller pipe and basically chokes the system. It goes from a twenty-four inch down to a.
Thirty inches, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, down, down, down.
Thirty down to twenty-four.
Um, and the county has known about this and they have plans in the twenty twenty-four budget to design and fund the construction of a relief sewer. And basically they would um, create a secondary channel.
Just to go, woo.
To basically bifurcate the system to alleviate the choke. And this would allow additional sewage to go through Mount Kisco without choking and be diverted. This would also be critical in Riverwoods' ability to be able to divert their sewage through the system. The problem is, is that it's looking at twenty twenty-four. Um, Fox Hollow has been operating, um, we didn't realize um, how fragile their system was. They've had um, a mechanical breakdown and basically the, the system's teetering. And so there's tremendous urgency. Um, one of the things the county asked us to do was to verify that in fact it was as urgent as, you know, a situation, dire situation as Riverwoods was portraying it to be. We contacted the Health Department and our worst fears were confirmed. Um, so uh, we are prepared to send a joint letter to the county, the mayor's coming tomorrow to sign it, he's already signed it. Um, asking them to um, accelerate um, the uh, design and construction of this relief sewer. It also includes um, limitations, temporary limitations on flow from both Newcastle and Mount Kisco through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven.
Well, the idea being that once the relief sewer is in place, these restrict, these flow restrictions would then be lifted because there would be a capacity for it. It's less of a sticking point, quite frankly, for Newcastle than it is for Mount Kisco due to the fact that Mount Kisco has a large economic development project planned, that they're renovating their, their downtown and adding additional, you know, sort of development and housing and retail up there. So they have an immediate need, um, and then, you know, communities further north have a need as well. You know, I mean, this is really, this choke point is literally the choke point for any future development north of that choke point. Um, for the most part, Newcastle and the, you know, sort of development that we have, you know, potentially planned for our hamlet, you know, that, that ties in south of the choke point. So for us, you know, limiting, and we, so we did what we could, um, and, and were able to cap our flows and Mount Kisco did what they could um, and, and are, are willing to put the temporary cap on their flows. But we have to get the county to agree to accelerate their work on the choke point because Mount Kisco isn't, you know, they, they have things they wanna do and the ability to move forward. And so what we've done here and what we're putting forward to the county is a joint request and, and, you know, talking about the history of the project, why it's critically important to the drinking water and, and health and, you know, sort of the New York City D E P watershed. So, you know, kind of tying in all of the, the sort of past history and the, the factors that go in that make this sort of a critically important project. Um, and so, you know, we have had some, I don't wanna say assurances, but we've had, you know, some positive conversations with the county that suggested that a joint letter coming from Mount Kisco and Newcastle would help to accelerate their work on the relief sewer potentially. Um, what this would also mean though, is that you don't have to wait for that relief sewer in order to be able to connect up to the Mount Kisco pump station because we've worked through these flow caps and we believe that we would be able to, you know, you know, based on the analysis that we've done and the analysis that you've done, that we'd be able to um.
Blow it up.
So if you, you recall at the meeting at the county, one of the things that was, you know, it's, they sort of threw down the gauntlet to both Mount Kisco and, and Newcastle and they said, you know, if you can cap your flows, we can move forward, and we've done that.
Is that contingent on this relief thing being approved, or you think we can go ahead before that happens?
No, I think it has to be approved because there is a, there is an automatic sunset on what we're proposing, which is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
And to be clear, we're gonna need the funds to do it too, right? So, you know, the county controls those purse strings. So, you know, our ability to tap into these different funds, those are set aside, but the county is the, the folks controlling that funding. And so, you know, their ability to then release that to us would be contingent upon, you know, working, working through this.
What about the sixteen million that I thought Newcastle had from the east of Hudson?
Understood, but the county, the county's the bank for that, for that funding.
Okay.
So that, that, that funding is essentially a whole coffee.
You're right, well, then we should just.
Yeah.
Right.
Smile a little bit.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we don't physically have it, it's been committed to us, contingent upon the county approving the project and et cetera, et cetera. So it, it, it should be still available for these projects and that's what we're all, you know, assuming as we move forward.
What, uh, first thing is, I wanna say thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Community wants to say thank you. I've done a lot of development in my day and to be honest, I never saw a town, city, municipality move as fast as you guys did and Mount Kisco trying to help us. So, you know, thank you, I honestly never saw it before and uh, it goes a long way. So thank you from me and the community and everybody else. Um, the plant is thirty-five years old. We've done everything we could do to keep it going. Uh, last week, a couple of other items happened, we fixed it, we move on. So we're fixing, but we're at a point where there's only so much time. Um, I did have our engineer come in.
Great.
Uh, they're coming Thursday, actually, with us to discuss everything again. They did a study prior, so it's the same company, it's, the study's there, the path is very close. It's really only about, I would say fifteen hundred feet on a main road to the sewer.
That's great.
Uh, the rest will go through our property, so we'll try to limit any kind of aggravation on the road. Um, it's Corden Avenue and Sawmill's right there, so we'll figure out the easiest and fastest way to do that. I did have a couple of companies come out who put out the pipe, lay the pipe, just to get their insight. They're gonna be there also at the meeting with the engineers, so we're on the same page. Our attorney has been already contacted legal for D E P.
Great.
Also, he's in the middle of trying to get the, the funds from D E P.
Good.
Um, upgrade, they're gonna try to do something that's combined, an upgrade, but also something else as a diversion. And the money should be there for that because they approved it, I don't know how many years ago.
Right, right.
Um, so we're on that, um, trying to think what else, if there's anything.
Because the county did, the county did ask about engineering and so that, that's great to be able to let them know.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to figure out, the attorney is, okay, so I'm sure the engineer's not gonna work for free.
Right.
So I'm gonna try to get as much work out of him as I possibly could
Right.
until we get a yes on the money and then I can allow him to go further. But I'm gonna try to get to a point where we're good to go and as soon as the money says yes, we're off to the races. Um, he did also talk to Mount Kisco, cause I'm sure we're gonna have to have an agreement with Mount Kisco to pay for the sewer. So they're going down that road already, uh, trying to discuss what it would be, what it would look like. And uh, trying to get it to go as fast as we possibly can and not be in, you know, for us to keep it going. And if there's anything that you guys need from us, please just call and I'll do whatever I can do to make that happen. And uh, you know, that's where we stand. So uh, I don't know what else we would need, it's uh, my first rodeo doing this.
So I think we don't know what else we need either. I mean, I, my, my sense of it is that we have to, we have to clear this hurdle with the county with regard to the choke point and the, the relief sewer. Once we've done that and they've given us assurances that they can accelerate the project and they've approved that plan, I think then we need to, you know, kind of have round two and all sit down around the table and, and figure out where do we go from here and how do we, you know, how do we secure the funding? What agreements need to be in place, sort of everything that you, but it's great that you've gotten the job started on thinking through all of that. Um, from, at least from the way I've been thinking about it, you know, I've been just wanting to, to get this letter out to the county, get the county to, to accelerate that work because it's, it's kind of the critical um, choice point for us because, you know.
It's for everything, yeah. Yes, I agree. And uh, you know, so that's where we are, you know, uh, again, the, the property does sit, you know, two hundred feet from the river, which then flows into the Corden reservoir.
Yep.
Um, so even with an upgrade or whatever they talked about, yeah, I don't know if that's somewhere where they're gonna be able to put the plant with all the different water changes.
By upgrade, you mean that, a new, a whole new plant?
Yeah, whole new plant and plus if it's double of what it would cost to do the diversion. Basically it goes through our property, out to the Corden Avenue, makes a right, and about twelve hundred feet, fifteen hundred feet, that's where the sewer is. So, you know.
That's where the Mount Kisco.
We will have to.
Common sense.
We will have to.
I think we said that at least once in the letter.
And uh, instead of going, you know, at one point they wanted us to go, I think, eight miles down.
Yes, yes, they, yeah.
And that was kind of interesting.
That is an alternative.
Uh, then there was a pipe coming up, but that would take ten years. And so this one is quicker, easier, cheaper.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we balled you for twelve hundred feet on the road. Uh, maybe we could do it in the summer, so there's no buses, so less traffic.
If we done it night, it'll.
Oh, even at night, whenever it has to be done, we're doing it.
Yeah, we've just gone through this, you bother people sleep when it's at night, you bother traffic when it's during the day, it's no good.
Yeah, exactly. Yes. And I'm on that road constantly all day long, so I know what's going on there. Um, but, you know, that's, anything we could do, again, we'll do. If we could push along, we'll do, anything you need, we'll do. It's just, you know, at, at a point where, you know, we need help and thank you for helping us because it's, it was a, it's a long and hard road there with the plant.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of timeline from, you know, getting a slider to them to blah, blah, blah?
No. The, the letter literally will be, you know, signed and will be sent out tomorrow. I'll mail it along with mailing it to, you know, for profits to everybody, but uh, yeah. We'll follow up uh, in a couple of days after we receive.
And that's, and that's going to who? And what?
To the county, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. With, with copies basically to everybody that was in the room.
All right, so we'll get a copy at some point.
Yes.
So this is the, so I've, so I've been here since two thousand twelve at Riverwoods, this is the fastest it's ever moved, so we really, really appreciate your help.
Keep our fingers crossed.
But it's also the point where we really need your help.
Yeah.
You're so, yeah, that's for sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming in, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Chappaqua Hamlet, that's what? That's, that's, we love.
Okay, so we have a series of um, proposed initiatives uh, in the packet um, that I have been referring to as the Chappaqua Hamlet Investment Act. Um, but they really, because they've all potentially helped to stimulate growth in the hamlet, um, but they also kind of stand on their own, so we should kind of take them one at a time. Um, the vacant storefront registry, Nick, do you wanna summarize the local law, you want me to do it?
Uh, underway, I mean, we could go first, so the, it would create a new chapter of code one twenty-two A. As you'll see in the, um, the whole purpose is to get vacant stores to register, so that sets forth legislative findings that there's a recognition that vacant storefronts can adversely affect the immediate and surrounding areas, prevent the most appropriate use and development of the properties and that findings that found that one empty storefront on the block can lead to more vacancies and diminish the value and appeal of the surrounding commercial area. For of course, health and safety interests as well, to make sure that we know in the event of emergency who to contact. And that's the other purpose of the vacant store registry, is to make sure that we have appropriate point of contact. And also recognizing that the registry will help uh, drive economic development by helping potential small business owners locate contact information and location of vacant storefronts. Really putting potential users, uh, tenants in touch with the owners of those properties. The registry itself has a series of definitions and then in chapter one twenty-two A three requires a vacant storefront to be registered. This is on page fifty-four of the packet. So the property shall be registered within ninety days after you effective date of the chapter and thereafter within thirty days upon a storefront becoming vacant. Um, registration form provides basic certain information, so there's contact information provided and then it needs to be renewed uh, each year and notify the department if there's a change in registration information, if the property is sold or if it no longer becomes vacant. Also requires in section one twenty-two A four that a sign be posted, um, and displayed in a storefront window clearly containing the name and contact information of the contact person, most likely managing agent responsible for maintenance of the property so that the town or the public can get in touch with the property owner when that, that's necessary. Uh, one twenty-two A five sets forth language regarding maintenance of the vacant storefront. Be kept in good repair, repainted when required, I can't yet remove debris, trash, garbage, and other things of that nature to make sure that the building is kept presentable. One twenty-two A six provides for the town board to establish by resolution fees. You'll see when we get to it later that, um, while we have this moratorium resolution proposed that those fees should not be imposed. Um, twenty-two A seven has certain exemptions, so if vacant because you're doing work pursuant to a building permit, that would be an exemption of uh, of, of payment of the registration and renewal fees. Um, pending land use application, so if you're a vacant storefront, but you're pursuing redevelopment, you would not have to pay the fees, you'd still be required to register um, if the town were to reuse it for any reason. You'd, and also if you have a valid written lease of at least uh, one year, um, you would not have to do it. And then the other cha, uh, section set for penalties for offenses, the establishment of the registry and uh, the numbering uh, for codification. Also provides that in chapter one twenty-two A six, uh, under fees, that all revenue collected uh, from the imposition of the vacant storefront registry fee will be used for the Discover Chappaqua program and for programs that would market and promote Chappaqua Hamlet, making sure that those registration fees are reinvested back into the hamlet.
Two, two, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is what bothers me about this law, is that Newcastle is more than just Chappaqua. And while this is written to talk about Newcastle, the fact that money's going to Discover Chappaqua, while that's laudable, we do have other areas in town. Um, and then I wanted to know, is this just supposed to apply to the hamlets? Or is it also applying to stores in Chappaqua Crossing, for instance?
It applies solely to the hamlet.
To the Chappaqua Hamlet.
To the Chappaqua Hamlet, correct.
So why wouldn't this apply to Millwood?
It could be, that's a possibility.
Why would you limit this to Chappaqua?
We, we actually asked um, Tom to pull for his opinion on this, whether he thought that it should be more broad. Um, and a couple of things, I think first, because the idea behind this is really how do we help reinvigorate the Chappaqua Hamlet? Um, second, he just doesn't see the sort of demand for it in the Millwood Hamlet that he sees here. So, one of the issues that we're trying to solve for here, it actually just came up this, this weekend, um, is that people come to us wanting to know about potential space that they, that they can lease, right?
Right, I.
Um, and, you know, we don't, you know, I think it surprises people to learn that we actually don't have a compendium of, of information
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
of vacant stores are. Um, and he just said that it doesn't, it, he doesn't see the same um, issue in Millwood that he experiences in Chappaqua. in Millwood that he experiences in Chappaqua with people coming and looking for some of this information and having sort of a a a less certain sense of what vacancies are.
Yeah, I just feel like, you know, we represent the whole town and just to confine this to who's to say that's not gonna be a problem in Millwood at some point. So I think, and someone may want a place in Millwood and then won't know that something there cuz we're not requiring that to be on the registry. So I sort of feel like this should be covering all the hamlets.
I definitely missed something. Where is, where does it say this only applies to the Chappaqua hamlet?
Yeah, I didn't see it in there, but. And then if you're gonna do that, why aren't you requiring this to happen all over? So somebody drives into Chappaqua Crossing and they, everything is vacant in there, that's not gonna
I I would think that.
Well, any, either.
For example, and the biggest example is that one point five million from Summit Greenfield is used to offset the impact to the hamlet. Big piece of that.
Fully aware. I don't think it has to go to this. I don't think we've discussed that.
Those dollars go solely into the hamlet for that purpose. This here, as we know, we look around the hamlet. One of the direct consequences, and just in general, the hamlet was failing in many, many ways and to try and reinvigorate and give it some sort of life here, you need to to uh draw attention to the deficiencies. And you look at the bank, and I'm drawing a bank, is it Wells Fargo? Has been sitting out of space.
No, I agree with the concept. I just think we're limiting it. And it bothers me that we're making the rest of our.
So I think if it becomes, when it becomes an issue, I think it's very easy to expand it. There's very, no issue to expand it. You you just, you can add it. Um and I do, I do agree with Tom, from what I've seen, and certainly he's certainly out in the field more than I am, that it's not the same level. We've had vacancies right when you come off the sawmill, you're coming right into the hamlet. You're coming right here. This is the face, whether you like it or not. Yes, you can come from different places, but the main thoroughfare of the sawmill, you come right over that bridge, you're gonna see vacancies. That's the first thing you see when you come to your town hall, to your, to your middle school, even depending where you come into your high school. So I think it's it's hitting it more impact here. Should it be expanded? I think absolutely it can be at some point. But for the purpose of that one point five, to reinvigorate, help the downtown, this is sort of a second piece of that, to help reinvigorate the hamlet.
First of all, I don't see where the one point five has anything to do with this.
No, no, to be clear, what I'm trying to say is we realized, and and you had the foresight with Adam at the time, to say there's going to be an impact from Chappaqua Crossing, and this money's are gonna help to reinvigorate and protect the hamlet. This is just another method or means to help protect the hamlet that is failing in many ways. And we have taken the steps to rebuild the infrastructure project and to streetscape the project, but there's more things that need to be done to make sure that the hamlet is viable. This is just one of many steps. Is, are there banks that are sitting on property and not doing anything to allow for stores to move in? Um, no, they're not. I mean, if we spoke to one merchant, he said the bank didn't even want to to build, to fix up a spot. So.
I got it, I got it.
So so that's the purpose. I think that's a fair assessment.
Point is, the reason that it's failing and stores are vacant has nothing to do with Chappaqua Crossing, I don't think. I think it has to do with the current climate of retail and that people are shopping online and there are other, many other issues. And I think to limit it, what is the harm to put this as a Newcastle proposal? And if you really wanna do it that way, you could bifurcate it so that monies, you know, put into this registration for Chappaqua, go to Chappaqua if you want to. Ones that go for stores in Millwood can then be utilized for Millwood. But I think to limit this, to me, this is not a Chappaqua Crossing issue. It's not a one point five million dollar issue. This is a town issue that's affecting towns all over the country with retail. Let me finish, please. So to me, to limit this to Chappaqua is is really not serving our residents well. And I don't see the downside. Yes, I'm done.
I was just starting talking. I just don't wanna interrupt you. Um so I I think there's a way that we can structure it so it can be both, you know? So I think that having consulted with Tom and asked for his his guidance on this and the fact that he said he doesn't see the need in Millwood, um and I think we all recognize that there is a need for it now here, um because there hasn't a demand for this information. Um you know, I think we can structure it in such a way that we can, we can look to do this now and then we can plan a date.
What's the difference? You change, you would change Chappaqua to a hamlet, Newcastle hamlet.
The difference is that there's a, there's a, you know, a startup cost, as it were, associated with the creation of the registry and the time that it will take to, you know, get the compliance from the property owners to develop the registry itself and to set it up and to get it moving. If we don't see a need for it yet in Millwood, if that's the guidance that we're getting from town hall staff, you know, let's let's not legis- let's not legislate a problem that doesn't exist. Let's focus on the the thing that we wanna solve for.
I just think the incremental cost to add the properties in Millwood is not so great if you have to develop the registry anyway. And to me, I just think I represent the entire town of Newcastle, not just Chappaqua, and I would like to see this to help out everybody. The whole town.
We all, we all represent the entire town of Newcastle.
Right, but I'm, my point is that I think we should be representing the entire town of Newcastle. And maybe he's not seeing it as much in Millwood. Frankly, there aren't as many stores in Millwood. But if we're gonna develop it, why are we only legislating for Chappaqua when we could be legislating for Newcastle?
So you are correct. There are many less stores in Millwood compared to Newcastle. I mean, a point of this legislation is to make it easier for businesses to go and find locations available for usage, right? And so um the question becomes, what are we looking to make sure gets, you know, gets that attention? There's no question that the downtown, the Chappaqua hamlet is, we, I think, one open uh open store, maybe it's two um near Speckarelli's in in Millwood. I don't see a reason why we couldn't specify, you know, our downtown hamlets. Mind you, Millwood becomes massively less complicated, uh kinda as you said. I don't see why we couldn't include the Millwood hamlet as well. And it it's such a small, a small component to to allowing people to know, hey, if I'm looking for a particular, uh I'm looking for a location available for my store for my usage, what difference does it, does it make a huge difference between Chappaqua and downtown or Millwood downtown if there are, if there are store openings?
And there may be someone, sorry, who's looking for a place right off the Taconic for some reason, and they're not gonna get that in Chappaqua, but maybe they would be happy to know that there's a place next to Speckarelli's that's open.
I just think candidly, I I think a registry is important, but I know off the top of my head that there are ten vacant spaces in downtown. And the optics of charging a fee and the whole rigamarole, like, I would prefer to just take this under Discover Chappaqua and just meet with Joan Simon, who represents eighty percent of those people, and just cover this. Because I just, the idea of like, creating a legislation with fees is just, it it's kind of, it doesn't make me feel good.
You mean by take this under Discover Chappaqua?
Meaning, create the registry through the website, you know, get the contact information. I I just, it's.
But if the bank doesn't wanna ever lease their property, how is that gonna help?
So just to be clear, the town wouldn't be acting as a real estate broker in any sense. The town would just have information available on demand and we would actually create it on on the web. We'd do it on the town of Newcastle site that would just have the information about that that's listed here in the legislation.
Right, available properties or.
We're not trying to broker the properties.
Right, no, I I'm not saying that at all.
We wouldn't have the ability to work with and promote individual real estate agents.
I understand that.
Joan or or anyone else who's really brokers like these properties here.
Also, I I. And I wouldn't want an under discovered Chappaqua. I'm sorry, cuz I feel like that's supposed to be a marketing site. I wouldn't wanna highlight vacancies in our town under that website.
I know, uh I mean, under our town website.
Town website.
Makes perfect sense. I think i- in- including the zoning districts for the Millwood hamlet, I think makes sense.
And I have to tell you that that we had a a rather long conversation about the fees. And we thought that twenty-five dollars was just such a nominal amount.
Which is funny, cuz I thought we, I thought we landed on twenty-five too. Um so the idea with the fees, we actually talked, we had a long conversation about whether to to just eliminate it entirely. And the guidance that we got from Tom was that having a nominal fee associated with it oftentimes will compel the behavior. So, you know, a twen- a twenty-five dollar, whether twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars to register your property is really, that's that's, you know, we believe not, not, you know, over the comfort line.
Well, sometimes it's marketing too.
Sure, it's a twenty-five.
Oh, and it is so.
It should, it should help these property owners.
Twenty-five or fifty dollar fee is not punitive, right? And that's what we're, right? It's to cover the cost of our town maintaining this.
Yeah, but we live in a town where people get bummed when they get the alarm renewal fee or their mail. I mean, seriously.
It's different and they should be running their streets.
I'm I'm just vocalizing my concern about charging a fee in a town where they've already been through construction. I don't, I think it's just a hard sell. That's all I'm saying.
I don't think, I think a lot of these landlords or landlords, there's a lot, but there's certainly plenty that predate the construction that they've been vacant. Um so I don't think that's necessarily gonna be an issue and and I don't think that twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars is gonna deter anybody. Uh the benefit far outweighs, in my view, the cost.
I totally agree.
And then is this meant to also cover up by Walgreens?
Yes.
Yes, those, those, those zoning codes are Walgreens here.
It's in the definitions under uh storefronts, which sets by def- of zoning districts, BR, BRP or the BD zoning district. Because I believe the same is covered on the moratorium.
I just, to me, if if what we're trying to solve for is not having vacancies in our town and to bring vibrancy back to our town, to me, this should cover every retail property within every commercial property in Newcastle.
Well, I don't think that we need to expend town resources on highlighting vacancies that exist in Chappaqua Crossing.
I I agree there.
Somebody refill working overtime to to lease their space up there. I don't feel that the town needs to track that. Uh I mean, I'm I'm willing to to take back and to consider how how we would fold Millwood into this and and what that means for this. But I do think, just to circle back to the conversation earlier, setting aside whether there's any relationship to one point five million dollars, I do think part of the impetus behind this is really to think about how do we create programs that help the Chappaqua hamlet, not just because of the opening of Chappaqua Crossing, but also because of what they've been through, as Lauren points out, over the course of the past three plus years as a result of the infrastructure project and and how we know that that has had an impact on the town. So, you know, that's that's kind of behind all of these things that we're discussing tonight is this undercurrent of how do we, how can we as a town do more to be sort of proactive in terms of our support for the Chappaqua hamlet? So I do, I do think there's a relationship there, um even if we expand the focus to Millwood, I I do think that there's just some.
But isn't that the point of Discover Chappaqua and some of the other things that we're doing to promote Chappaqua?
And this too, yeah.
So normally, the next step would be to set a public hearing. Do you wanna consider any changes to this?
I just had two, I had two other questions, more technical questions. If if there's a violation, please, and someone doesn't pay, is that just a part of a tax lien?
Yes, if they don't pay, we would make sure that becomes part of the uh, gets re-levered onto our taxes.
And then I just quickly looked at sixty-four dash ten, sixty dash four ten, um which is not in the physical, but it's reference for the signs. Uh and it says, you have a minimum here of no smaller than eight inches by ten inches, and then I looked at sixty-four dash ten, which I had not before. No more than one such sign exceeding two feet in height. Forty seven, another, another, such signs that exceed one feet in height. I'm just curious if, so for example, the 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 um the bank, why don't you mind making me say?
Wells Fargo?
Wells Fargo, thank you. If if there's a rented storefront, but there's non-rented storefronts, but it's one property owner, how does that work, especially if those are not facing the street?
Right, yeah, we built in to the definition.
So it it comes, it comes and and it's, and if I'm reading this right, they're limited to one not exceeding two feet in height, although it doesn't, I think it says length. I just want someone to be in.
No, we we just didn't want it to, we wanted it to be legible, so we were hoping like, you know, like, not smaller than this, so somebody could see what the information was. And we didn't want them putting like a business card.
Cuz the other things you don't want have this big, right. You can't by law, you can't by statute, cuz you look at sixty-four dash ten, sixty dash four ten, pardon me. Um no s- no s- no signs that'll exceed eight square feet, if I'm reading that right, but that's still pretty damn large. So I don't know, we just wanna take a look at it to make sure.
Yeah, Tom, we'll go back to what Tom, but he's between.
We wanna plaster the windows.
I mean, there is one today that's a poster size, though.
By the way, just take a look at it to make sure it's aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, in um, what you call it, um um um, oh my gosh, Petticoat.
So we'll go back and review that language with Tom.
Yes, I just.
Yeah, that was in uh, unrepentable, no, that's not unrepentable, that's under.
One twenty-two A four.
A four, yeah.
Posting a sign about one feet three.
I mean, I haven't memorized the zoning districts just yet, so I don't know what the codes are for the for Millwood.
Yeah, I I it's it's what's looking at.
I I would like to propose having this cover all of Newcastle, or at least the hamlets.
Uh yeah, I'm willing to to think about expanding into the hamlets. I I don't wanna try to bury out every place where we have a commercial storefront in the whole town. Um that fails.
Well, it always is, it's only valid in certain districts, no. Yeah, I mean, the hamlets would cover it. And it's just a matter of, and whatever fee that you raise in Millwood, where would that go?
We'd have to cross, we'd have to figure that out beforehand. But I obviously we need exponentially less, at least as of now, exponentially less.
Right, but you you would need to.
Keep it in a segregated account.
Yeah, yeah.
For the benefit of.
Oh, we've done that for the, for the uh.
The branch, there's a sign, there's.
First, things can go on there. It's not that much money, though.
Yeah, you know, fifty dollars for a lunch for everyone for the day.
They might take it a hundred dollars a year.
No, but that would pay for planting, for the garden club to plant around there.
Uh beautification of the.
Right.
Yep, yeah, sure.
Can we do that, big, narrow, and beautification?
Alright, sounds good.
Okay, so this is an overview of the facade improvement grant program. So the idea here is that this is a matching grant um that would be available for property owners or for merchants to apply for um funding to be able to improve the um facade of their building, um their storefront. Um and there's some samples, examples of uh potential projects that are listed in the uh, in the program overview. The way that it's being proposed at the moment is in two phases. Um the first would take effect immediately and would allow um businesses to or property owners to apply for a grant of up to a thousand dollars, um a matching grant of up to a thousand dollars. Um and the phase two of the program would allow for them to apply for a maximum amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. Um the reason that we structured it into two phases is that understanding that the town is in the process of putting together the Form B's code. Um the idea is that once that code comes out and there are certain sort of design standards that are in place in the code, um this funding would be able to um be available for um property owners who are not looking to develop their properties necessarily, but who um wanna make upgrades um in, that are in keeping with the uh, with the design standards and Form B's code. So that's what's here.
So I have three questions on this. First, where are we proposing the money is coming from?
So the money from this would come out of the one point five million.
Okay, so we haven't actually discussed the best use of that one point five million. I thought part of what we were gonna do was sit down as a board and brainstorm where we want that money to go. If we're taking little pieces out of it here and there, it's useless, basically. We had a big chunk of money and actually utilized to make large improvements. And I think before we are proposing the money should be coming out of that, we should be sitting, which we've been saying we were gonna do, down and look at where we think that money should best be spent. Number one. Second, with the zoning code, I think because we're developing that and it does have design standards, even not relating to development, et cetera, but it does talk about signs and what facade should look like and and colors and styles and things like that. If we're gonna adopt something like this before we adopt a new zoning code, we at least have to make sure the ARB or somebody has ultimate control over what is put up. Because I would hate for someone to get money from us and they're putting up a sign that completely flies in the face of what we're eventually gonna. flies in the face of what we're eventually gonna approve as how we want the hamlet to look. So those are my comments.
Is that two or three?
Yeah, you have the three.
Well, I had the zoning code and ARB, I ended up sticking them together.
But I think, I think, this is a part of a follow-up to what Lisa's saying in terms of the dollars.
It's two A and two B.
Where, we we have not, at least for the past four years, have not discussed holistically what we wanna do.
Exactly.
Uh, so for four years time, we've been spending a piecemeal money on certain projects, or, you know, for most recently, the chap line.
Form-based code consultant.
Yes, yes.
Corn business.
The profit is totally coming out of the one point five.
Right, that's actually, that's actually the only thing that's making the money out of it.
So.
Well, we've also spent it on Discover Chapua.
Did we, was it somewhere from the chap line, two of the monies for that?
Right. It's supposed, that's what all of it was supposed to be for.
Right, right, so, well, well, so, so.
Well, all of it was supposed to be for improvements to the chap.
Improvements to the hamlet.
But, but is either, so, okay, right, so, my question to Jill is.
Yeah, I don't read it down.
No.
No, but I'm saying what it was supposed to be used for at the time.
No, the the, the language does not specify that it, the language does not specify that it has to be used for chap line.
What this.
Okay.
Either way, we're following the language.
You know what the language says.
Uh, right. Right, it doesn't, doesn't, but I, so, the question I have for Jill is, we have an accounting, when's the last time we had an accounting? One point five million is not really one point five.
No, 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 it's definitely not one point five anymore.
Not anymore.
Right.
Five hundred thousand for the form-based code, Discover Chapua was six thousand.
Right. I think it's really important to sit down and holistically figure out what's left and where we think is the best place to use it.
To go over the.
I I. I think we need at least an accounting is generally, just generally, right.
I'd have to give you an.
Mm-hmm.
It's mine, but I mean, it's it's north of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, somewhere between nine and seven fifty.
Is remaining or has been spent?
No, no, is remaining, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, that's half of it.
Mm-hmm.
So half, so half has been spent?
Right. Yes.
Form-based code consultant was seven hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars.
Well, we really need to sit down and figure out where it's gonna go, because eventually, we're gonna use a little bit here and there, and it's gonna be gone.
No, I know, I'm, what did you?
And without having made any sort of significant impact.
I I don't disagree with that.
So I'm, I think we need to sit down and have this discussion.
Well, the fact that it found that a form-based code was a significant impact.
I think I've done this four years ago.
Right, but now we have another seven fifty that can still make a significant impact, but I wanna sit down and I really think it's important
Right, this has been.
to figure out what our priorities are with spending the rest of that money. And if we wanna put a cap on this, maybe that's what we wanna do, but we should figure.
We did, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Maybe we should, well, that's a lot of money that may not make a big impact to the place of signs.
It it is a lot of money, but the the process of the one point five million dollars is meant to help revitalize the Chapua hamlet and to buffer, buffer the hamlet from the impacts of Chapua Crossing and the retail opening up there. And that is what this proposal does.
Right, but to me.
That is a clear alignment with the purpose.
I totally disagree. I think the fact that people need to redo their signs has nothing to do with the impact of Chapua Crossing. I think we're trying to do nice things because we did a downtown infrastructure project that took significantly longer than than was budgeted and definitely negatively impacted many of our stores here. And as does the whole financial landscape of retail right now, I think this has nothing to do with Chapua Crossing.
I think it would incentivize to make the people to make the downtown look better and be more inviting. Allowing them and giving them the opportunity to do so financially certainly is a benefit.
Right, I agree, but it still has nothing to do with Chapua Crossing.
And and. I I, that I would, I I disagree with that, I believe we can agree to disagree, and I think it certainly does. And that's the whole purpose of of these dollars, whether it was made, you you wanted it to be for the chap line or not, the dollars are there for that purpose. Whether it was there envisioned for this, certainly not, it was envisioned for.
It's supposed to counteract negative impacts of Chapua Crossing.
And this is, this is a way to reinvigorate, this is a way to reinvigorate the house.
Which would have been traffic issues.
No, it is meant, I mean, you can pull the language, but it's meant to to.
I don't, I negotiate it, I don't need it, but.
Yeah, I've had it not to get the exact language.
This, to me, has nothing to do with Chapua Crossing.
It doesn't talk about traffic impacts on the hamlet, that's not what's in the language, the language is to help the small businesses in the hamlet
I understand, I'm giving an example of what would negatively affect downtown based on Chapua Crossing. Somebody's sign not being up to par has nothing to do with it.
So the, the impact of Chapua Crossing on the downtown in your mind is traffic?
No, I think it's traffic, it could potentially be stores, I don't see that that happened, because we legislated significant things into what we have approved up there. I think there could be issues with walkability, I think.
So you don't believe there's been any retail loss in terms of sales to our hamlet as a result of Chapua Crossing?
To one or two stores, I do, but not the majority of the, I don't think, from the majority, that's not what I'm hearing from any of the, uh,
But it, but also, but also, it's it's something, it's not fully built out yet, but it's not, Chapua Crossing isn't fully built out, it's not, it's not done.
Any of the store owners.
So, yes, it may not be fully to the extent we're realizing today, but tomorrow can be a very different story when you have people living there and more, uh, commercial slash business there, retail there.
Maybe, but that's why I think as a town board, we have to sit down and figure out our priorities for utilizing that money to best serve the town, I don't know that using a third of it.
Well, I've I've been talking about this idea for two years, and I feel like there, this has, when I speak to the small businesses in our town, the property owners in our town, I think this has the ability to have a real positive impact on people. And for three and a half years since the infrastructure project kicked off, these businesses have been clamoring for the town to do something that is gonna have a real impact and really help them meet their bottom line. And for years, we told them, no. We launched Discover Chapua, and we're gonna build, we're gonna build on that, but for years, we told them there was nothing we could do for them in terms of providing financial assistance. And this fills that gap, this is something that we said we couldn't do, and we figured out a way to be able to provide a matching grant to meet that request that we've been getting for years.
I'm not necessarily against this, I think taking the money out of that one point five bothers me a lot, and I think that there is, there are guidelines we need to put around this. Like making sure the ARB is reviewing what needs to be done, making sure it's gonna comply with the draft of our zoning code, whatever anybody is doing. To take the money, though, you wanna set aside money out of something else for this, I don't really have a problem with it. I have a problem with it coming out of the one point five, when we have not sat down as a board to figure out our priorities with where that money is.
We also didn't sit down as a board for the previous.
And I know you're gonna say, what's money coming from here and here?
No, no, but I mean, we, this wasn't an issue in any of the previous expenditures coming out of the one point five million.
It absolutely was.
For some reason, for some reason, the prior town board wasn't held to this standard, but this one suddenly is.
It absolutely was, and you were on the board when we agreed to use it for the zoning.
Right, but what, but you.
But we, and at the time, we said, we have to sit down and talk about where the rest of this money is going, because it's being spent. And now we're looking to spend more, and we still haven't had that discussion.
Right, right. So, so you you see other uses that would be more beneficial than this?
Potentially, I think we need to sit down and talk about it.
I think we should.
Well, there's no doubt, we should, we should no doubt, we should down and talk, but.
We're sitting, let's talk.
Hey, I'm, I'm listening.
I I think, Lisa, and this may fire off, but it's a little, I think, somewhat disingenuous for you to say that now, for four, how many ever years we've had the access to these dollars, I don't recall anyone sitting down and saying, let's all come together.
I've said that many times.
Okay, well, certainly, when you were deputy supervisor, and there's a different supervisor, no one said, let's come together and sit collectively and talk and figure out how we, as a, as a unit, wanna spend this money. It was, this is what's gonna happen, and we all could voice our opinion, but this is where it went, this is where, it was never this, 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 this robust conversation that should have occurred, so.
Well, I've said it many times, and it didn't happen, I didn't control agendas, so it didn't happen, but we need to, I think we should sit down and do it.
So.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that, and I I agree with you, and I think we should continue to move this program forward simultaneously.
I don't dis, I'm just, I don't disagree with you, I don't just.
I think this is a compelling use of that funding. That's my opinion.
I don't know, I think it needs to be thought out a little more.
In terms of guidelines around it, and in terms of where the money is coming from.
I I don't, I can, I mean, I, yeah, that's fair.
Yeah. It's a whole other thing.
I think, I think, I think that's fair, that we need to make sure that, I mean, this is just, you know, it's, it's not hammered down all the details, it could probably work out a little bit more, but I do think that the concept and the idea is a good one. And I do think that that one point five million is, one of the reasons it's here, the reason it's here is to help our downtown hamlet. So I do think it's an appropriate place to get those monies from. Um. I mean, that's what, Lisa, I do think that we need to have a more holistic conversation.
I do too.
As part of this whole thing, but, but I don't, I think they're not mutually exclusive, that's my opinion.
If one is approved.
May I ask, if we don't exhaust the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is it like already earmarked for this, like we can't use it for something else, like what are the parameters?
No, have you been?
I mean, I'm, I'm, if, I'm just saying, like hypothetically speaking, if we did this, and then, let's just say,
Right.
ten thousand dollars gets used up, or five thousand dollars, or whatever it is, then what happens to the?
Mm-hmm. Sure.
But I guess we're going to.
That's a great point, we, we, I mean, that, that's something we can discuss, that's a good, that's a good point, maybe we put some time limit
Mm-hmm.
on which, uh, this goes back into the the fund, that seems reasonable.
Or for that matter, we could all agree that a hundred fifty thousand is too much, and we could agree at a hundred twenty five or a hundred thousand, I mean,
Yeah.
you know, whatever it is, we're having a conversation, we should have a conversation about it.
And if we were to say, uh, after five years or after ten years, this this program expires, that seems reasonable.
Or two years.
Especially considering the form-based code is coming, and it's going to change the, the architectural standards of new buildings as they come up, and
Mm-hmm.
this, you know, this particular usage to specifically, uh, augment and enhance a, a storefront will be less important ten years from now, or once things start to move in our town.
Well, yeah, absolutely, and there should be a time that it's, it's, ten years is not, but, but, you're right, so we have to think about when does it end by.
A whole important. I I hear you, so.
And you know, the other, the other thing. And so, we renew it, so.
The other thing I would add, though, is that this is actually, so this is something I've been talking about for a long time, but it actually uh, was one of the recommendations that came out of the rescue, who did the market analysis for us, as a way
Right.
to incentivize compliance with the form-based code, so, yeah, I think that it's possible some basis for that being aligned.
Okay.
So, would the board consider?
That's a good point.
Would the board consider perhaps, uh, incorporating some of the form-based code architectural components? We were, we were specific.
Except we haven't approved the code, and that code is still in public hearing.
Well, the majority of this money is likely to be spent once the code is approved, right? It's only a, a fifty percent matching for a thousand dollars until the form-based code is approved anyway, so we're talking a minimalist amount of.
Maybe, you're still potentially throwing away money to something that then we're gonna mandate somebody change, so.
I think Lisa's probably saying, no.
I don't think that investing in the facades of the buildings in our hamlet is ever gonna be throwing away money.
I do, because I think if we are then mandating, if they do something now that then completely is opposite to a code that we then adopt, we're gonna require them to do it again, so we have now given public funds to something that then shortly later, we're requiring that to redo.
Sure.
Well, so we do have, we, we do have, so we do have a draft of the code, and this does require that the development department reviews all applications, so.
Yeah, they would not approve something that flies. I mean, I would actually have the ARB, I wouldn't have the development department do that.
Well, it it's who approves the signs now, so if they wanted to get a new sign, whatever the new sign, whatever the current sign.
Processes.
Processes, we would.
It's the ARB.
It's the ARB.
ARB.
It's the ARB.
Exactly.
Sure, okay.
I think that's.
It's not, this is one example, though, it's not.
It's. Also remember that you're saying that, um, the town would be throwing away a thousand dollars each time someone would use it before the form-based code is is enacted. Um, that's also saying now, the building owner and the, or the, or the, um, the, uh, owner of this, or the merchant
Merchant.
is also throwing away a thousand dollars.
Assuming they're aware that this form-based code is coming out.
Re- 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 re-.
Definitely.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, there's no, I, can I make clarification?
It's outrageous.
So, if somebody chooses to do something to their building now, we're not gonna make them undo it once you change the code.
Sure.
You know, it, it is, it, yeah, it is grandfathered in, you know, there are buildings that have been the way they are for decades.
It's grandfathered in.
Well, sure. But I mean, if we're in the middle of of enacting a code that has architectural standards, to then give money to someone to then do something that is, doesn't meet those architectural standards, because they haven't been adopted.
Your architectural standards in your form-based code are very broad.
Yeah, I need to.
It, it, there's seven, there's six generations of architecture, styling of architecture.
Well, that's for building a building, but we also, in conjunction with it, I thought we're gonna look at sign requirements and a lot of other things with the ARB.
The form-based code talks about what type of signs, but it doesn't talk about, and and there's general color guidelines. You can require as part of this referencing, you know, taking a look at the draft code to get a sense, but you can't require them to adhere to it, but you can afford them of it.
Cause if you don't do it.
But I think Lisa made a fair, you know, request, perhaps we should sit down and put it on the agenda to talk about what this, whatever eight hundred thousand leftover balance could go towards, I mean, whether it's the chap line or something else, or another thing that we're not thinking of. I don't think that that's a huge ask.
No, I think we've all agreed to that.
Well, I think we said that, that we're all, you know.
Okay, okay, so cool, so we're, we're on the same page as that. And then as far.
But I think the difference is that I'm saying that that conversation can happen in parallel with continuing to move this program forward. I don't see that as being a contingency, to be able to continue to work on that. I mean, I think that there's enough work that we've identified that we need to do to clarify the language in the program and the approval process and what's the role for the development department versus the ARB, et cetera, and how does this fit within our current
Time frame.
Yeah. review and compliance processes. Um, so, you know, that work can continue to happen while we simultaneously pull together both this and targeting for the one point five million.
And I'd be curious to see from Rob Deary if there's another place where we've set aside monies that this could come from, that is appropriate and makes sense while we're having a discussion.
And so.
Because otherwise, that's assuming that no matter what the result of that conversation is, we're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that on this.
You're spending up to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Up to a hundred and fifty thousand on this, if the money can't come from anywhere else, then having that discussion with respect to this is on, on, I can't think of the word, doesn't really matter, because you, you're saying, well, we're moving this forward anyway, if there's no other place for the money to come from, then regardless of what we figure out in our discussion, you've already decided that this a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this program should come from that money, cause there's no other place to take it from. So I would like to understand where else to take it from.
Well, I've decided that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars should be spent from the one point five, because I believe it to be the most appropriate place to take it from.
Yeah, I think, I agree, I think it's appropriate to take it, I believe that.
So that's.
I mean, we haven't had a discussion ever about this from the town board until today. So I wanna explore where, um, I mean, maybe you've had private, but I've never, we've never had a discussion.
Oh, no, no, I've, I've just sent it to the town board multiple times, so, you're right, it never got onto the agenda until right now.
You had a town board, we've never had a discussion until right now. So my question as to where the money was coming from is not written into this code, so that's why I think I would like to find out from Rob Deary if there's any other place to take this money that doesn't take it from that money that's was earmarked. For that.
Thanks.
To answer one of.
Revitalization of the chap line.
Well, it says it's nine hundred plus.
To answer one of your.
Well, maybe we should take it to somewhere else.
What's that?
Nine hundred plus.
Okay, cool.
And to answer one of your other questions from SG's offer letter, it states, provide the town with one point five million dollars to be utilized by the town in its sole discretion to create and or improve recreational trails, facilities, and or other recreational opportunities, to study and or implement improvements to the town's existing business hamlets, and or to undertake such other initiatives to reduce impacts associated with chap bar crossing development as the town deems advisable. And making, making our town, making our downtown hamlet more, uh, you know, attractive to people to walk around and and be there is acceptable use, based upon that description.
I don't read it that way, but I think we have to sit down and have a conversation as to what we're gonna do with the money. We may decide it makes sense to spend all of it on something else, and what that thing may be, I can't tell you right now.
Sure.
But if we don't have that conversation, then we don't have the money to use for that something else.
Sounds good.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I I agree, I agree with Ivy, that I don't see a reason to not make this ready to go at such a time that we decide as a board to make this happen, uh, while we're investing in getting other uses for the, uh, nine hundred thousand plus.
Okay, so we'll pull together that accounting and we'll work on some of the clarifications that have been suggested to the, uh, legal process.
The next one is the resolution establishing the Discover Chapua Committee as a draft resolution on page sixty one of the packet.
Right, and that has to be amended with names.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm so annoying today, but the names that are on there, did we put out anything asking people to volunteer to be on this committee?
Honestly, no, and I, and that's my, I met with Ivy, Dana, Rob Greenstein, Linda Fierce in December, and basically we were talking about how we have this wonderful website, what can we do with it, how do we get it running? And so, in my mind, I was like, okay, we gotta get the right people in place. And so I asked these particular folks, I recruited them specifically. Georgia had these other people in mind, like Michelle Grexson, and essentially, these were the folks who were like, yes, I will definitely do it. Now, I understand that.
There's not a lot of people.
I think there are for free, there are a lot of people who wanted to do this work for money, there were not a lot of people who wanted to do it for free. I don't know.
And I, though, I will disagree with Lisa, I mean, and I, I'm just gonna say.
How do you know, though, if we didn't put anything out to the public? I think there are a lot of people who would like to give to their town, and their expertise is photography, or websites, or graphic design,
I'm agreeing with you, I'm agreeing with you. Yes.
who have been telling me they would love to do something for the town if it was available to them, but they don't know that this is even an option.
And that was my bad, I will take full responsibility for that, because I just give me.
I don't think, I don't think it's your, I don't think it's your bad, to, to have, to have found an entire roster of people who are willing to donate their time to work on this project, I don't think it's your bad. Um, I think what we can do is the same thing that we did with our airport advisory committee, which is that when we found that there were additional people who wanted to be involved, we expanded the ranks of the committee. So I don't see.
But we also interviewed everybody.
You feel that you want all these people to come in and you want to interview them? I.
I I feel that we need to open this up and we don't even know if people are, what if we get a hundred people who are interested, how are you gonna decide these are the right ones?
And that's what we're saying. We're saying, we're Lisa, 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 we're saying, we're saying right now that we will open this up. We will bring, we give people the opportunity to come and and to be a part of this committee, basically, which.
Well, why can't we put it in the newsletter and put this off for two weeks? Does it matter?
We can, we can.
And let people come apply if they wanna be on this. And if no one else wants to apply, then fine.
Um, I will say this, just just as an aside, sorry to interrupt Ivy. Um, we did have an article and a February piece to to publish um late this week with through Lyle, um, the Newcastle Media Center, a lot of talking about Valentine's Day and it's basically a love letter, love Chappaqua about, you know, what you can do for Valentine's Day and for the month of February, highlighting an event at the Chap Pack and also highlighting events at the Newcastle Historical Society
Mm-hmm.
and the library and the punch tin and the tea and all that good stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just wanna make sure that, cause we've already done like the work, we've done the photography, we have the photo releases.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna make sure that this doesn't prevent that from getting published.
I don't see any reason not to appoint the people who generously volunteered their time to be a part of this.
Why would it?
And listen. Right, and listen, if you have, if you give us the names of the people, give us the names of the people who reached out to you, either you reach back out to them or reach out to them and potentially add them.
I just think, you know, everyone talks about how things need to be done in an appropriate way and all of a sudden, things aren't being done
Alright, there's people that have come to you.
the way they should be done. And we should put something out, much like we do to any committee and say, do you wanna be on the committee? And if people wanna be on it, that's great.
And that's, and that's, so that's what we're saying. We will expand the membership of the committee to make it possible for anybody who wants to. But for the people who have already committed and donated their time to be a part of this and who Lauren has worked really hard to recruit, I see no reason to turn them away.
Right, so provide whoever, we can ma- do other outreach, but provide the names of people who reached out to you and we'll reach out to them and see what they wanna do and how they can put in. But nothing is precluding us from opening the door.
Okay, but I think we need to put something in the newsletter asking people if they wanna join this committee.
Okay.
I think it's really unfair to not do that and just have it closed behind doors kind of committee.
Yeah, all committees should be out in the open and open to people going to their meetings.
Sure. Like, I don't think people have been knew this was a possibility, so I, it has to get out there.
We should, well, because the committee didn't exist yet. I mean, it is, if somebody knows.
Exactly, so we're appointing people to a committee that doesn't exist and we haven't advertised, which I don't have a problem, they're doing work, but I think one hundred percent this has to be put out there.
And great, and Ivy said we will absolutely put it out there, but these are already people who, you know, at at least Lauren is conf- Lauren is confident
Lauren is confident that they are stepping up to go and do the work.
They're already stepping up.
They've already stepped up.
Already volunteered their time.
Essentially. But yes, it should be open to.
So.
So the the plan is we will appoint these people, we will advertise it in our next year newsletter that there are, you know, that there's a new committee looking for additional members.
Yes.
Um, I think we should change the one thing on the resolution to make the uh maximum number of people bigger.
Yes. Yes, 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 yes. We were doing that anyway, actually. That was a really good idea.
But bigger than what Lauren said, to add one person, I would make it up to fifteen or whatever it may be.
Yeah, 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 no, that's right.
Okay, fine.
Um, I see.
And I mean, I think it should be said, Lauren's done like yeoman's work on transforming the initial discovered Chappaqua site
Mm-hmm.
into what is being sort of re-released and and revamped and the thinking that she's done in terms of pulling all of that together has really been
T E T.
really misleading and offensive. Thanks.
Cool.
Great. Okay, so it's going to be fifteen members appointed for two two-year terms, except the initial term shall be staggered at two and one-year increments.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, and then we'll be ready to start with the first group of nine.
Should you make it up to fifteen members in an event that you do not have, right?
Yes.
Yeah, up to.
It's actually.
Sorry, Paul.
That's the maximum number.
I was, I was speaking very positive.
They had to twist arms together. She falls so great at doing it, you mean?
All good.
Everybody's.
Everybody.
Oh, yeah.
So the.
It's a long night, guys. Let's let's keep going. Let's just keep going.
So the. The next, the next item was an amendment to the procurement policy.
Thank you, Nick.
If you go to page seventy-three of the packet, it's adding a local.
Sixty-six.
No, start from sixty-three, but you go to page seventy-three, it's giving specific directions.
Seventy-three, yeah, that's right.
Yes, thank you.
I'll I'll let you serve. So in section five, local preference is the new language being added on the top of that page. That reads, in the case of all purchases made and all contracts awarded pursuant to this procurement policy, except contracts awarded to the GML, um, the town administrator may approve the use of a local preference for a vendor that one maintains a place of business in the town or two sells supplies, materials or equipment manufactured in the town and has quoted a price not exceeding five percent of the amount quoted by the next lowest responding vendor and provides that the price quoted by the vendor is the lowest price among all those received from all responding vendors qualifying for the local preference. So in essence, someone who meets that criteria um can be awarded awarded the price. Doesn't apply to your general GML page thirty-five thousand dollars for the public works or twenty thousand dollars for purchase contracts.
Okay.
And that would just require a a resolution amending your procurement policy to add this new section five and renumber the other policies.
And it's it's quite narrow, but um a valid use of making sure we we honor local before uh outside of Newcastle. But it is a very narrow.
Uh, as prescribed by state law, unfortunately. Sounds good.
Nick, I just, I I don't have a problem with this, but can you just, I don't think I'm reading number two right. So it just says sell supplies, materials, equipment, blah blah blah, and is quota price not exceeding five percent of the amount quoted by the next lowest responding vendor.
Right.
But the quote is the lowest price?
No, so if you get two quotes, so if you get two quotes, one person from White Plains for a hundred dollars
Like, I'm not reading it right. Yeah.
and someone from Newcastle for a hundred and five dollars.
Right.
You could, the one from Newcastle would be five percent higher than White Plains, you could then select the Newcastle one.
Right. Okay, I get that. I don't understand the and further provided. I I just, I might not.
Right.
That the price quoted by such vendor is the lowest price among those received from all responding vendors.
Well, so the further provided. Who qualify, who qualifies for the local preference.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay.
Yep, so if you have three who qualify, take the lowest of the qualified.
Not to sound silly, I sometimes do that. Um, I don't expect you're going to be getting a two million dollar vendor locally to handle something. But is there anything in here that maximizes out the, you know, it it you know, could be a lesser percentage if in excess of a certain amount of dollars?
So if it, it can't, at the end of the day, if it goes above twenty, if it's, it falls either into a purchase contract or a public works contract. And so these contract, this preference would only apply to works under that twenty or thirty-five thousand dollars.
But there's, but it's exceeding.
No, it only applies to ones that are less than. So this, it does accept for contracts that exceed that close amount, right?
It says you throw.
So in essence, this only applies to any contract.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay.
Yep.
And you're allowed on a case-by-case basis to make a determination as to whether you want to apply this?
Yes. Yep. And we best to the town administrator with that.
Probably prior to the release of the law.
Yes, yep. So, alright, so these one go to public bidding, this is under your procurement policy with, it's for example, under five thousand dollars. They're gonna make a phone call to a couple of local vendors.
So how how would we be able to know ahead of time what the prices are gonna come in as in order to know that we can go and say, hey, we want to allow local preference on this?
It wouldn't work that way, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think, you know, at the time you're reviewing the bids, Joe's gonna know, well, these people are local, let's let's see if it applies.
Okay, but, okay, so we can have it apply after the RFP goes out and when, once the bids come back?
Yes.
Yes, and again, we say RFPs in some instances, it's not a formal RFP, it's just to get a phone call or.
Yes. Okay, that's a good.
Game as well.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So the last one.
I'm sorry, one other question. Do they have to? So let's say we do this RFP and and it comes out and we cannot, we've already said it could be local preference and the person comes out and they're less than five percent over the, but we somehow think that the lowest bidder, who may not be local, is better.
Yep, and then.
For some reason. Even though the RFP has come out, could we still choose to go with the lowest bidder?
Absolutely. You have that discretion, yep.
I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, yes, right, you're not bound to a local preference.
Got it.
It's optional, that the town administrator discretion.
Okay.
The last item on this Chappaqua Investment Act is page eighty-two. It throws a motion amending the master fee schedule concerning the town's vacant storefront registry. So at the time the town board considers and if adopted, you would then amend your fee schedule. Um, and it states in the third, whereas the law requires that you own it to register within ninety days or thirty days of the storefront becoming vacant, you've established that the fee schedule will be, as I heard tonight, twenty-five dollars. And then the last resolved paragraph is that the annual registration fee, but not requirement to register, shall be waived during the town's moratorium imposed by the local law thirteen of twenty eighteen to pay for such fee and then that the requirement to take a, pay the fee shall take effect within X number of months of the expiration of the moratorium. So we just need to come up with, is it three months, six months? Okay, so again, this resolution would be considered at the time the um vacant storefront registry is acted upon.
Okay.
Okay.
So the next actually is, flip it over on page two, is actually page eighty-eight. And that has to do with the street opening permit local law. So we have had situations, most notably North Greeley after Con Ed was done laying their gas trench. Most currently, thankfully, not in our town, we drive along one seventeen in Now Pleasant where um Con Ed's sub has just laid a gas trench and the road is all messed up. There are no more plates on the road, but yet it's it's been left in horrible condition. Um, we would like to have some recourse against utilities who are ripping up our roads. And so um GTW has recommended to us that we uh create a uh street opening permit policy that's akin to Starsdale's and other communities that are taking very aggressive uh stances when it comes to restoration. And so um with this comes if uh the street, for example, has been repaved within um was just paved within five years, that Con Ed's gonna have to come in, they can't just replace that trench, it's gonna be curb to curb. And there's, there's certain dimensional requirements now. So if you're opening um a certain area, you're again gonna have to do curb to curb to make sure that the investments that we put in our roads are maintained. Um, we have been trying very hard to work with Con Ed to coordinate our um our street paving projects to coordinate with their gas replacement works. If you remember, a couple of years ago, people on Markport were waiting very impatiently, you know, complaining constantly as to why isn't the town repaving the road? We could tell by the lousy condition of the road that there had been eight to ten gas main patches and that that gas main had to be replaced. We waited it out, Con Ed came in, you know, put in their new gas main, we were able to come out right after then and take and repave the road.
And take it.
Um, it it's terrific. Um, unlike unfortunately what's going to happen in Lisa's area, where we just paved the road last year and Con Ed has asked for a street opening permit to take and rip the road up again.
Yeah.
It it is a waste of everybody's funds, it's tremendous inconvenience to to residents and it makes everybody look foolish. And it's it's unnecessary and despite our best efforts to coordinate.
But this would, but this would still happen, though. It would just be not be on the town's dollar to to put it back.
True, but we're, but what we're hoping is if Con Ed is aware of that, yes.
Incentivize them to to.
And it sets higher standards.
Of course, they would in town and do it first.
And it sets higher standards than what is exists now in terms of a repaving.
Right, right.
And then on pages ninety-eight and ninety-nine, you're packing up the two resolutions that go along with the adoption of a local law. The one on ninety-eight is establishing a fee schedule amendment for street opening permits and on ninety-nine is the adoption of the diagram regarding the scope of work that we've seen on the curfew. So the next step would be to schedule public hearing.
Right. Is this something that Jerry would share his secret paving list with them?
Yes, he did. No, 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 he, no, no, it's the other way around. So what, what, so Con Ed asks us.
So, you know what I mean, like if we.
They should share what they're gonna do.
Yeah, so Con, so Con Ed asks us uh what roads we're planning on paving.
Right.
Um, and in turn, we ask Con Ed for, over the next five years. And so, you know, where are you planning on replacing gas mains? Uh, Con Ed isn't very forthcoming, but we are forthcoming to Con Ed saying, in the next five years, we expect at least to be paving these roads. And we have a general idea based upon how lousy the road is, how many gas patches there are, that Con Ed should be looking at these areas. And that's what's just so infuriating. Um, when we take the time and energy, we, you know, spend all this money taking and repairing roads
Sure.
only to have Con Ed come back and their patch jobs have been notorious. But anyway, so this is actually Starsdale's model and this is what they require. And so ripping it down to.
Okay.
The the other thing um that I think this board does, is this the um police as well?
It does, yes.
Yeah. So, um, we um, we are mandating um on certain uh roads, like within the hamlet, um, and certain key roads in town, that when Con Ed comes and they're even blocking one lane of traffic, that they need to um have our police on site to make sure that there is proper flagging and proper traffic control. You know, some of the people that are flagging for Con Ed, not the most um efficient people in the world and we really need a police presence, especially in the hamlet. Any kind of blockage of just a single lane really wreaks havoc on the traffic downtown and makes it very unsafe.
Yeah, so time RFP on page ninety.
So in those instances where there is scheduled repair work and we're able to provide police assistance, we'd be very much glad to be able to do that and we think it's a reasonable um expenditure that the utilities should be responsible for. Okay.
So there's the.
This is great. Who suggested this to us?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so actually, the the PBA came to us to tell us that there are other communities that require this
Can't remember.
Yeah.
and they were sort of curious as to why we didn't. And I was like, you know what, fabulous idea.
Sure.
Not for nothing, I thought it would make.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. And it was, I think, it after Jeremy suggested it, the PBA came, right?
Right, and they picked up on it, right.
This is eliciting my conversation. Well, you'll respect your county members, right?
Touche.
So there's big components in here, talking about that commercial general liability, what is comp umbrella liability coverage. I'm surprised that we didn't require that kind of thing from municipal, from, you know, Con Ed or anyone else who was doing this work before. So I guess it's good that it's going to be in here now.
Yeah.
Well, it, it actually wasn't, it's once included in the language above, we've modified. Did you see where the strike counts are on the top of that page?
We made.
Are we sending something to Con Ed? We're gonna.
We'll be, well, of course, we said, yeah.
Cause we're gonna, we're gonna come back to visit us again.
Actually.
And the top, but but not as, yeah, but right, not as specific, but it was very gentle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially not about insurance, insurance.
Yeah, no, exactly. Yeah, no, right, this piece it up, this, right, this adds, makes some work convenient.
Yeah, so a lot of.
This will date on on post, on the date on the public.
I can't, I, you know what, I just got, um, yeah, actually, I was just.
Before they come. Just relax, I'm gonna show up.
Yeah, but I know.
Yeah, um, John's great from Verizon, actually just contacted me today.
When. We're gonna, we're gonna come, we're gonna come respond to this and tell them here.
Ah.
So.
I don't see them doing actually a decent amount of work.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I sent him our.
It's part of some winter storm and stuff, but I see.
I don't know, but I sent him our double poll inventory. I um asked him if he could please send us the uh engine list to see how we've compared. And I asked him for a contact person to Altice and I actually got the contact person just today. Um, and he told me he's working on it and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
He's, he's actually been very responsible. Um, form-based code, Sabrina, welcome. How are you?
Hi, Sabrina. How's everyone?
This is great, Sabrina.
It's just a start. So, um, you had, what I sent you guys was kind of an example of how the comments are going to be tracked in the actual scoping document as well as a table which kind of calls out who said what and where it ended up in the scope. If their names aren't on there, it means that there wasn't any substantive comment or comment that I could fit into the scope. You have since seen cu- seen communications from Bob Kirkwood and Tom Curly. Um, I am treating any new comments that I get since that public hearing, they're being inserted into the scope. So I today have a different tracked version than you have, which includes more comments. And as I get comments, I think of things that need to be changed. So you'll see staff comments in there and that's just based on different discussions that have occurred in my office with my contemporaries as well as what I see as we're going through this to make sure we're calling out and covering all of the bases in the scope.
And the, any board as an involved agency or interested agency, actually, I got that wrong, as an interested agency.
Interested agency, please.
They're reviewing it as well, did they do that tonight?
They are reviewing, they actually, they did have a a lengthy discussion tonight, um, a healthy discussion. They do seem to be a little bit concerned that there's no set parameters within which to start at the impact analysis, if you will. You know, what is the maximum build out? They don't have a number of residential units, the num- the square footage of commercial uses. Um, so they're struggling a little bit because they are used to a defined project coming to them as a, through a secret review process. This is a little bit bit broader. They have, um, they're going to, they've requested that you extend the public comment period to a week to February twenty-first. They have scheduled a workshop at six PM next Tuesday um from six to seven because I need to be there and be at your public scoping session to workshop the scope, but they feel they need a little. To workshop the scope, but they feel they need a little bit more time to comment. So they're asking you to consider that request.
So extending the public comment.
The right now you have written comments, which we do on the fourteenth.
Yeah. Fourteen. Right, I agree, right. So we could allow for written comments through whenever they're.
The twenty first.
Right.
They've requested to the twenty first because they meet on the nineteenth And any changes or comments they have, myself would have to be putting it into the scope Or putting it together and sending it to you.
And that if it allows the town board to review the revised comments on the twenty fifth?
Oh, on the twenty fifth, yes.
Yes. And so so let's just talk about that.
The reality is that the town board wasn't going to do it that week anyway. So because we don't meet that week, so. Right, so it doesn't matter. It's it's great.
Yeah, I I I just take a moment to talk about the process Because there is the 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 final draft scope with everybody's comments Will need to be shared with all of the comments with the consultant team. They will then come back and identify what is within the scope Of the GEIS of their contract that they proposed to you and where things may cost more. That is something.
Oh, good.
Well, well, again, before we come to an agreed upon scope, Well, you know, we need to be aware of what additional charges we may be looking at and how How that plays out in scope because there's a lot like There was a host of roadways and intersections that the consultant factored on monitoring. Public comment has added five more. We don't know if that makes sense from a traffic engineering standpoint, the consultant has to weigh in on that.
When you know there's going to be a public scoping process, why would you limit yourself to only studying a small subsection of things?
It may not be, it may not be necessary.
It just feels like that's, yeah, okay. I don't I don't like the idea that when we have planned all along for a public scoping session And understand that there will be A breadth of comments coming in from the public That our consultants are going to charge us more money to handle the scope comments that we have requested.
I understand. I am hopeful that there's not a lot of areas where it goes falls outside of their scoping. I I really do, I hope that, I I'm just, I am forecasting here.
I think we're gonna figure out a way to fit it into.
Yeah, I mean.
I would like to as well, but what I'm trying to stress to you is that there has to be a timeframe
Nothing there is so crazy.
Associated with that, the planning board has yet to comment this up.
Right.
Um, there has, I just We need to make sure we allot the proper amount of time To be able to understand all of the changes and impacts of those changes to The dollars, if any. I'm hopeful they're not, I agree with you, I'm hopeful they're not.
So let me ask you a question and I Sort of think it doesn't have a place in the scoping document, but It was brought up a number of times at the meeting and Bob Kirkwood had it in his email that he sent around. To make the the concept of making sure it's the public And potentially the planning board, whoever it is, has a greater role in future development. And I know it's sort of Is contradictory to what we're trying to do with the form based code, but there is validity to that Concept that you don't want to just knock the public out and we talked about it at our last work session. But then Bob reiterated in his email and a few people brought it up at the meeting the other day. So my sense is it doesn't belong in the scope because it's not an environmental impact.
The scope, well, well.
It does.
Where, but maybe it does and where can, how can we discuss that so that we see a happy medium?
It is in the scope, but there's a. There's a comparison of the approval processes, that's part of the of the proposed action. And so we have to compare, what is that approval process today and what are we changing it to?
But that's really an environmental impact.
But how's that impacts environmental impact?
That has an impact, it is.
It's in the scope. It's it's in the scope right now, I I mean Bob's comment is understood and everybody heard it and you know, it it it
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
It causes to add a notification, a neighbor notification or neighbor opportunity to come in and talk about it
Notification.
And change the code, but there is a a point in the process where They're looking at the approval process, comparing the approval process today with What is in the code, it's in the scope.
Well, right, it's described as part of the proposed action, I don't see that there's anything, I'll look at it.
I'd just be curious to hear from the consultants a little bit, cause they've done this in other towns. And Eric did say some other towns do have a greater level of public input even with a form based code. So I just wanna make sure we analyze that, to make sure that it's accomplishing what we want. I wanna make sure that by eliminating essentially A lot of public input around future development, as long as it meets with the code That we're not inadvertently doing something we don't wanna do and I don't just mean neighbors. It may be a larger group of people who live in the town who may have comments. But I know that conflicts with some of the purposes of the form based code. So I just wanna make sure we're analyzing it and finding whatever happy medium we should be finding. Sorry. I think this is why it's gonna be critically important to line up the process today Versus the processes that would exist under the form based code Because I think there's a misunderstanding about public involvement and people keep saying public approval. There is not public approval in our processes today.
No, no, of course not.
Um, and so having people understand this is what it looks like today, this is what it would look like in the future. Because there are things that that could be done today as of right under existing code
Uh huh, sure.
That would not require any level of public approval or even necessarily public input To the extent that I think is being suggested from the.
And no neighbor notification.
Right, there's no, right, right, so there we may be going further than has been than, you know. Right.
Yeah.
So that's why I think like just having that understanding will be important and and I I hope, I think Will also speak to some of these concerns.
Okay, so Nick, as far as extending the deadline goes, is that something that we would do with the at next Tuesday's?
Yes, just do a resolution to extend the date for receipt of written comments.
If if the board is interested in.
Right, do it tonight or you can do it next week?
So I, my personal feeling, I'm interested to have a member, yes, my personal feeling is much rather If we're, if there's a place where we're spending money, I'd much rather spend money To give people more time to comment on this Than I would spend money to have, you know, the consultants do things that I think should already be in their scope. So from my perspective, that's money well spent, money well spent, you know, if we're if we're tacking on a week And that's there's a cost to that, that's something I'm.
There's no cost to that.
Okay, good, even better. And then practically, I agree with you, and then practically We're not having a meeting the following week anyway, so. Right, right. I mean, it may, it gives you more work to have to wait, but the board is not.
Well, do you wanna extend?
Right, but.
I just said my work is my work, it's not about, it's not about me.
Yeah.
Okay, if there is If the twenty first, you wanna extend it to the twenty first, if you wanna extend it to the twenty eighth, that's completely within your jurisdiction. It has no impact on the work that I do.
I think we can extend it to the twenty first, that's what the planning board is asking for.
Yeah. Yeah.
If we receive a level of comments at our next public scoping session on the eleventh, that makes us feel like we need to hold it over. I didn't feel like at the last one, we had a volume of comments that that warranted holding it over. My concern and the reason I wanted to keep it open for longer Was that I felt that some of the comments we were receiving were not scoping questions.
Correct.
They were questions about the broader process.
Mm hmm.
And so I wanted to take the opportunity to redefine for people, how do you write a good scope question? So, you know, I think if we can kind of work on getting that information out to people too and making sure that they.
How do you wanna get that?
Well, well, I think what's very helpful is that that
Chart.
I don't know what you call it, yeah, the chart, thank you, it's a chart. Um, I think this is really helpful, I think, um, you know, taking and putting that, you know, what's, you know, how do
Yeah.
How do I include my comments in the scope, for example? You know, here's the revised scope, here is the chart.
Well, I I can give you, I can give you as of tonight A revised, cause I've been working editing it and an edited scope even further, if that's something that you're interested in posting.
Right. Yeah, well, it was included in this, but then we'll put it in next packet as well, but
And circulating.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I think maybe if there's just a spot on the, you know, we're gonna advertise on the electronic board again, you know, Town board's scoping session, please join us.
What is, what is the cost when you send out mailings to the community, like a postcard mailing, what does that generally cost the town?
No.
Um.
I guess you can do the math fairly simply.
We say that's six thousand homeowners, but I don't know what it costs to print it.
So six thousand, that would cost about fifty cents.
Cause we print them in.
So three, three thousand dollars. It's like a few thousand dollars, right?
I don't know. I don't know if it's worth it for the scope, certainly for the public hearing is coming, I would I would do that.
I don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd argue.
Yeah.
But I'm sure you'll put in the newsletter again and it's been, but yeah.
Okay, yeah.
For for reasons.
It will be.
Well, listen, I think that the entity that you're gonna get the most useful comments from is going to be the planning board
Orange here.
Orange here.
Because they have experience working with scoping documents. The public comments, some of them have been helpful, some of them have not, they've been more general. Um, you know, I don't want this. So Or I want this, but I don't want this aspect of it. Um, but I I think so you can't go wrong with extending the timeframe For the board that's asking for it to be extended.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and it doesn't hurt, it just pushes the timeframes. You know, Kemley Horn came out initially and said June thirtieth, they'd have the, they estimated for the final EIS. I don't think we're looking at a June thirtieth anymore, I think we're we're pushing, we've pushed that down the road Given the work and whatnot.
Then June thirtieth was too late anyway, it was never gonna be.
How much, how much longer is the moratorium set for?
We just set it up there a month ago, right?
It expires in June.
So it'll be a.
It expires in June.
And we can.
So it pushes that out again.
Every six months, yeah.
We wanna consider sending out a NICS or something, just saying, it's true, you know.
We can do appropriate.
Just to say be heard.
Is that appropriate, is that appropriate for, I mean, can.
Not a NICS or a CBOB.
Or whatever it is to say Come to the public session if you wanna be heard.
Yeah. Or do or be accepted.
Yeah, but it's about the scope, it's about the scope.
Yeah.
You wanna be heard on the scope.
Yeah, scoping session, please join us.
Scoping session, right.
Some people don't even know that.
For more information.
Right.
Listen, it's also, comes to point, it comes to point.
Right, more basic.
What did we, what did we, what did we do the other day and then people were, oh, the FAA thing? And then people were like, the FAA got my phone number, how did the FAA get my phone number?
Oh, man.
Come, because it said, you know, just it said just come to the FAA, open house, you know, people were like.
Right, right, right.
Cause I think their trade address is FAA, you know, raised.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was funny, actually.
We could put on the triangle sign, I could price up the sign.
It, do another triangle sign.
I know, but we did, there's nothing in Millwood.
Right?
I don't know, so let me think about it, just so, just no one can say they were not aware.
Oh, I'm just thinking about it.
Well, listen, it comes a point in time where you, people take responsibility for themselves, right? I mean, you can email it, you can put it on Facebook, you can stick it on on the sign here at the high school. You know, as you're coming out of the train station, you see it. I mean, you you can only do so much, so it's about take responsibility, it is what it is.
Mind you, if anyone's watching, if anyone else, if anyone has any ideas of how else How the town can go and get messages out, that would be great.
Right, 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 well, and we're we're doing the Women Bulletin.
Yeah.
And we're looking at any and all invitations, so if people have organizations or groups that they wanna.
I'm watching if the PTA would put it in.
Let's ask them. They may not wanna set the, you know.
They won't, I'm sure.
Precedent.
Yeah, precedent, right.
Yeah.
They're only very generous in their home with the town.
You really want, and and to be quite honest with you, when the GEIS is out.
Yeah.
That's really.
That is the time that you really wanna do the marketing push to get people to look at it and to come in and comment.
Right, yeah.
Right.
That's true, yeah.
Because it, you know, we're we're talking very broad right now.
That's true.
You know, we're not talking about, you know, how does the code really change
A setback here and there.
What's out there, exactly, it's not real for people until you have something that assesses it and identifies the impacts.
Right. Right, they wanna comment on the impacts.
And then you're gonna be faced as a board with how to mitigate And you're gonna have to make choices because you have to balance, you know, you're balancing revitalization of the hamlet with other
Factors.
You know, environmental impacts, other visual impacts, you know, this is not going to be easy decision making. But you know, again, the I'll go back to the intent. The intent of a form of this form based code is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. The number one intent is to revitalize the business hamlet. And provide alternative housing types for, to put feet on the street to revitalize the hamlet.
Do you wanna approve the resolution to extend the comment period now?
Sure, we can do that tonight. Thank you. See how responsive we are, love it.
Right, yeah, okay, can I have a motion to extend the comment period for the scoping session From February fourteenth to February twenty first at noon?
September.
Second, fall favor.
Hi.
Hi.
You'll have a play more now?
I will love the planning board.
I'll take a minute.
And if any town board members are interested in hearing the discussion on Tuesday, They'll be meeting at six PM in this conference room. I would encourage longer to.
Be one more hour.
Or I'll be there.
Six, six, three AM.
Right, two of you can be there.
Six PM, six to seven PM.
It's gonna be what?
And the planning board is having a work session on the scoping session.
Okay.
So.
And only eleven, two, two, two.
Right. You can rotate in and out.
Why? It's a publicly, it's a publicly noticed thing.
Yeah, why can't I from the town board?
Oh, well, why, we can't come and just sit and observe?
You can't just sit there.
And not talk.
Not talking.
Yeah, I gotta talk, yeah, I could participate with the planning board.
Well, sit on opposite side somewhere. No.
Okay.
Hey, we'll turn, we'll turn our phones.
Right?
His dinner smells anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, send that one up.
It's salmon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had salmon for lunch.
It's notoriously fishy.
I'm sorry.
What'd you say?
So if you're there just to observe, you're not gonna engage in interaction with the board.
Right.
Yeah, one of us will be like this, one of us will be like this, one of us will be like this, see no evil.
Well, you can avoid, you need to interact, but you cannot go, those two people, the only two.
Right, there's no reason.
No.
I don't, I don't intend to interact, I think it's there.
No.
Well, just observe, just a question.
Let her have her.
And you may want it.
Right.
No, we, I don't think we do.
Yeah.
No, you don't, trust me, I just came from this.
Yeah.
Love you, planning board. We're all coming to your meeting.
Page one seventeen.
One seventeen.
All right, have a good night.
Tap to I, okay, finally, all right.
Is that moving more for today?
Yeah, yes.
So, safe home Sabrina.
Yeah.
So this is, these are the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, these are the crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Well, it's like black flooded, consistent with all the black flooded.
So.
We um, we have shifted from hardwired ones to solar ones. We are looking for locations at Langs and also North County Trail.
Mm hmm. Tap car.
If you take a look at one seventeen, on page one seventeen, you've got the cost per system of the galvanized Versus of the black flooded. It's a minimal difference, less than a thousand dollars. What would the board prefer?
Black flooded, I would assume.
Yeah, on both locations, yes, okay.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna take it, we'll approve it next week.
It's like six.
Um, but we'll take and start the We're rolling on this, we just need formal approval from New York State DOT, we just need to give them that. We have the CAD drawings for the foundations and then we'll get them ordered and get them in. Okay, great. The next is DNR annual renewal for support, this is at the Chapel Park Performing Arts Center, they can make sure that our sound system is working and.
Yep.
Um, the next is the revised concert proposal, page one thirty seven.
That's good.
Right?
That's new, yeah.
So, uh, this is a new edition, sorry.
Yeah, it's a new edition, yeah.
Um, the um, the revised proposal is looking for a Eight thousand dollar Um, donation from Epic. Contribution from Epic. Epic will receive a hundred tickets, it's on page one forty three. Uh, to be distributed to town of Newcastle residents. April fourteenth is the title for distribution of the free tickets, tickets not distributed by Epic by the day above will be released to Uh, the Chapel Orchestra or uh, uh, music for sale at the door. Okay, and there'll also be ticket sales of twenty dollars a person. Um, and fifteen dollars a person for group of ten adults or more. And children, three are free.
I'm sorry, so is, are they asking the town board for money or not?
Yes, yes.
A thousand dollars.
Okay, eight, eight thousand, okay, sorry.
That's ours, through the epic committee.
So, um, I'm just trying to remember, they were initially asking for fifteen to not have to charge for tickets.
Guess like. Like what?
Yeah.
Fifteen, right.
Right? Okay. Yes, yeah, I should be, yeah. Yeah, Nick is just pointing out that it really should say, you know, sponsorship, but, oh, no, no, this was last year, so.
Right, well, it was last year, so to the extent we try to model it.
Yeah. Yeah, so this year, yeah, so this year would be sponsorship by the town of Newcastle, not donation.
What page are you on here?
One forty two.
Forty two. Oh, okay.
It's just changing the language from.
That side, yeah.
It's just lots of dollars.
Yeah.
Don't change the sponsor document.
They have to, I don't think the friends of.
Would we
that's maybe right, but that's
we bought. uh, thirty tickets last year, so.
They're not even getting it.
Probably.
Right, it's not done.
Yeah, okay, okay, sponsor, okay.
You can get better.
Yeah, we don't donate.
Did he say, I didn't, I don't see it in here, he was gonna look into getting some grants?
Things like that, he didn't say anything.
No, he said, no, he said expected expected funding from the sponsorship from the Town of Newcastle, ticket sales and GoFundMe.
Yeah, he probably can't guarantee a grant anyway.
No, I I would be curious if they.
No, but but I was just saying, right, I don't think they apply or find some. Okay.
You would think to present these types of concerts that there would be monies available for that.
Yeah, from like.
So I think maybe going forward, we should ask them for confirmation.
Yeah.
So this comes back around year after year.
Mm-hmm.
What grants have you applied for? Sort of a condition, whether you get it or not.
Yeah.
It's just our.
Or what have you what have you what have you pursued, and we have to have a a list of things that have itemized efforts.
Yeah.
Can't fault them for failing because they all can fail, but making the effort.
I agree.
Failing is not the right term, but you know what I mean.
Oh, I know what you mean.
Good faith effort.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think at the end of the day, this is still for me a little bit more money than um than I I would I would like to spend, it's a lot of money for us, it's pretty much destiny, it's that's that line, um which means that we won't, you know, we don't have the flexibility to do other things, that said.
What's your number, I think?
Well, what I'm gonna say is, I actually think that we're close enough to the date of the concert and and I do feel that the concert is a huge community benefit um and does a lot of good, and so my my feeling is I I'm I'm comfortable moving forward with it this year, but I think that next year there has to be we have to consider reducing the town's contribution and asking them to to be looking more seriously at other funding opportunities.
So can I ask a quick a question and forgive me, but it's eleven thousand dollars in personnel costs. It's a huge orchestra that they're putting in front of it. If they were to downsize it slightly and were able to to to.
I don't think that, you know, but like honestly, I don't think that's for us to say, their program is their program, like they their orchestra is their orchestra.
Okay.
What the hell do I know about an orchestra, like don't don't bring the horn section, I mean I can't even play piano.
Well, depending on the horn section.
No, but I mean, I feel like they've they've got a product and they're asking for us to invest in the product and it is what it is, and it takes them a certain number of rehearsals and you know.
But I think your point, you're saying that eleven thousand dollar cost to us on top of the eight thousand dollars.
I I think it's it's just that.
No, no, no.
No, they're not.
Uh, sorry, what you said?
No, it's just cost them and a minimum of eleven thousand put on the program.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Oh, I do see the cost as to be the overall.
Yeah.
No, 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 they're doing it, so for for summer, and this is the email I wrote to to Ivy, so I'll just, you know, in full disclosure, um you know, thirty six hundred dollars gets us an hour and a half summer program. Chappell Orchestra takes and performs, and so.
But they don't, I don't think they bring the whole orchestra and I don't think they
Okay.
No, I don't think they rehearse, you know, and they have to rehearse this cuz it's a special needs concert and they bring the kids on stage with them, I mean, it's.
I don't think.
I think.
Whatever, it's just
I know, I know.
it it would it would be nice it would be nice to have more than one program.
Mm.
For that cost, you mean?
And
Yeah.
For 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 this population and it, you know, it's great, it's an hour long and I appreciate the fact it's an hour because
That's fair.
Yeah, that's fair.
that probably is the right amount of time, it it's just, it's it's a shame that that there's not, we're not gonna be able to do another program.
But I think, so the, I mean, I think management can be.
Zerobri required with the.
That's just
They're a professional orchestra.
I feel badly about that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
They just won't come work for the Chappell Orchestra, they don't gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not not for this type of event with that, no, okay.
No.
They're not working.
I mean, someone could decide they don't wanna, they donate their time, but.
We've got a handful of them, right?
What is it?
Yeah.
Most of them are like, yeah.
Yeah. Professional.
I don't know what to do, I don't do it, yeah. Okay, so you guys are good with this, we'll put it on for next time to prevent?
Mm-hmm. I am, I don't.
Um.
I mean, it's basically forty four hundred dollars per service, right, and so if we wanted another hour, that's basically another service of of forty four hundred dollars.
I don't know if that's the way it works, I don't think of service as by hours, I think it's by
I I I rehear.
by time you mobilize.
I rehear, well, they say a a rehearsal was about one.
It's definitely. Right, but it's maybe it's like one and a half or something.
Yeah, a rehearsal was one and a half, a concert was, again, estimating that, you know, concert is, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you think it's wrong to say, how about
Mm.
we, I I agree with Ivy, it's really high, like what if it's five? That's still a huge chunk for them than they'd expect.
I mean, can you, you.
Who needs three oboes?
Right, and there's nothing wrong, I guess, in asking, right now, we only have this, is there any way you can cut your number of musicians or reduce your cost at all?
Right, say, listen, yeah. Make seven thousand.
No.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
It's just a lot.
They may say no, it's impossible, right?
Yeah, I don't know, I I just, I kinda feel like the time is running short, we asked to sharpen their pencils once and this is what they came back with.
I. I I agree, I agree.
No, I agree, I agree.
All right, all right.
I I think we should find a way to ask them to sharpen pencils for next year.
Yeah.
Sure.
You don't expect, you don't expect.
Now. Right, don't expect this for next year.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Well, we're coming to play.
Um, along the same lines.
I I, yeah, I'm good.
Along the same lines, we had an opportunity come up today with this group called Ladies of Laughter. They are apparently very popular, they sell out at Emlyn Theater, they sell out at Ridgefield. Um and they wanna find a Westchester home.
Ben you?
The only thing is they, we would have to sponsor them, it's five thousand dollars we would pay to have them come, we would take all the money, we can sell tickets and we can take any money from the door, from ticket sales, from concessions, we probably see if we can get, we can talk about a liquor license and sell alcohol, things like that. Um and if this worked out, they actually would be promoting us, they, people buy their tickets even a year in advance, knowing they're gonna be somewhere. So they would actually promote Chappack as their Westchester home and it would be in magazines and newspapers and everywhere else they put it as well. So that opportunity came up today, they're hoping if we agree that they would do it over Mother's Day, cuz it's ladies of laughter, not Mother's Day, that weekend, that Friday night. So what do you guys think?
I I don't know anything about, I mean, how they promote us, how, what do they ticket sell for, how have they done another.
How did this come to us?
They contacted us.
Who who's asked the arts?
You or?
The the, they contacted the Chappell Performing Arts Center and John, and um he sent it over to me.
How does that work, is John then meant to negotiate the terms of their agreement or do we have to?
No, he can't do that, we need to do that.
Oh, good lord.
He will make sure the contract's sent out, any appropriate insurance, things like that, but this would really be something that we and the rec department put on, like we're producing a show for the residents and people can come, they would, it wouldn't be free though.
We should ask the rec mission.
Yeah, what what is, what do your ticket sell for, in general?
Exactly.
I don't know.
Yes.
Um, I don't know, that's a good question, I can find out, uh, I think it depends on the venue.
Yeah, and just to, yeah. Let's find out the math, what do tickets sell for, how many tickets we could sell?
She just, she sent me something, um.
We should expect to sell out, what other venues have they sold out, um liquor, we can have liquor, we can get a liquor license.
I I don't know.
Oh, we, Joe and I were discussing that, I, we have to look into it.
We have to look into it.
Harvey says no.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
Why?
Part of it, was it the party you say was?
We.
Li- viable, we're a not-for-profit, I think we might be able to do like a one-time
Mm-hmm.
event like.
Attempts, as it.
When when we had, when we had the
Think so, cuz we're not for profit.
when we had Oktoberfest two years ago, we had a year.
The thing in Millwood, right, too.
Yeah, but it was it was to Chico's, they sponsored their own new uh.
We had alcohol.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we could potentially do that too.
Yeah.
Um.
Local preference.
And best value.
How do you determine what I'm selling, I wanna be on that selection committee? So, yeah, they were written up in the tribes and
I'll say they hate me.
I start, I I don't know, I have to stop the second, did you have the um.
That's amazing.
I say, I don't, yeah, it sounds good, I I'd recommend the 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 recreation parks.
I think that's awesome.
Yeah, so I don't know, I couldn't forward this for some reason, but they have just some flyers they've done from Emlyn and other places and
Mm.
I think they're pretty popular, I did check and they do sell out.
I just say, it's good, I think we just get the information and find out what we can, what we can see, it's just dollars and
Okay.
things like that, and I think can do liquor, that would be fabulous.
I mean, you can have a comedy show without liquor. But maybe we could get to Chico's.
Kids at home, you certainly can.
Yes, you can.
Cause they.
But how how? But maybe we could get to Chico's or another company to come in and sponsor it.
I'm sure. How, well, how they do um Rocky Horror? How did that happen?
There was no.
There's no alcohol, there was alcohol.
There was.
The bad with the bands, there was definitely alcohol.
There was, well, they got a liquor license, the Friends group.
See?
And maybe they wanna co-sponsor it and they can get a liquor license, they didn't find that out.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have money, but they can get a liquor license.
Everybody got Joe.
Yeah, well.
I I have payment claims.
Co-sponsor it.
Payment claims, so let's see this stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I'm against.
Okay, so these, you're gonna get the information and we'll talk about it next.
You're a customer reader, I guess.
Okay, all right, good. I vote to approve the payment for claims, amount of one million eighty two thousand five hundred forty four dollars fifty nine cents. This is the summary pre-check writing report in detail, nature detail reports all dated February third of this glorious year, check so you should mail to each claimant listed on Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty.
Uh, second.
Okay.
Hi.
And we did the other one ready, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Can we move to a germ?
Uh, no, we're gonna adopt the resolution to extend the public comments.
We did.
We did, and also the other ones, they were just a couple of administrative items, just some minutes, if people can just review them, give, can you, if you can mark them up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sabrina, okay.
Oh, all right.
I I.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know, I've been arguing minutes, I.
Um, then you. If you could just review them, just mark them up and like literally just give us hard copies, that would be fabulous and um, that'd be great.
Yes. Yes.
Um, Girl Scout cookies, sale things, I'll forget what's going on, I'll pop in the can, um of the authorization to post the position for office assistant, uh, part-time help reassessor, have authorization to bid for T-shirts for recreation and D P W uniforms, and release of a letter of credit, will all be on the agenda for next time.
Yeah.
One of the reasons why I object to the Girl Scout cookies is because I put down sleeves with thicken inside at a time, it's disgusting.
Okay, we will try not to bring them.
I will break my daughter's order for me.
Disgusting. No, I get, and when I, I get so, my wife's friends and my friends and their kids, it's disgusting, I thank you so much.
You know, you wanna get some.
All right, we move to a germ, is that it?
Yep.
Second.
Okay.
All right.